Could I ask those present in the chamber to please join me in the council prayer? Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to vow safe thy blessing upon this council, direct and prosperous deliberations to the advancement of thy glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Clarence. Amen. And I'd like to acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal people as the traditional owners of the land that we're meeting on, and also pay our respects to elders past and present. Thank you. Well, it is great to be back in the chamber again, face to face, and open to some members of the public that are able to join us as well, now that COVID restrictions have eased to some extent. We are, of course, extremely aware of the threat of COVID, and we are pleased to be able to facilitate the virtual attendance of four aldermen tonight, who can fully participate in our meeting via Zoom. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube, and what is said is not protected by privilege. There is a link to the agenda papers on council's website. Moving on to item one, apologies, we have none, everyone is present. Two declarations of interest of alderman or close associate, I'd like to declare an interest in item 7.4.4 as patron of the Hobart Model Aero Club, Aircraft Club. Are there any other declarations? Thank you. Moving on to item three, we've got a number of items to deal with as one block item. First, which is confirmation of minutes, 28th of February, and the special meeting of the 7th of March, as circulated to be taken as read and confirmed. Are there any, Alderman Pearce? You're able to take your mask off while you're speaking. Oh, you've moved it, I'm sorry. We were going to deal with it as a block item, so I was only providing the opportunity at this point for Alderman Blomley.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, our third event is the 28th of February, page 41, and the spelling of your surname?
Thank you for drawing that to our attention, Alderman Blomley, if we could have that rectified, please. If there are no other comments, item 3.2, Mayor's Communication. I am tabling the diary events for myself and Deputy Mayor over the previous period. I'd like to highlight the fact that I, along with the General Manager, attended the Elgat General Meeting last Friday. There were five motions for decision considered, one of which, of course, was Clarence City Council's, the initiative of which was with Alderman Walker. All of the five motions were endorsed, most of them with some amendment, certainly the amendment for Clarence Councils was that Elgat lobby, the state government, to initiate and fund the development implementation, I'm sorry, wrong one. Took the wrong one there, here we are. Elgat lobby, the state government, to investigate the legislative mechanism to provide local government authorities with enhanced power to appropriately act on dilapidated, derelict and abandoned buildings, registers, and to charge levies in respect of those properties. So that's been endorsed, and it's now on Elgat's agenda as the lobby. Moving on to item 3.3, council notes workshops on the 7th and 15th of March, and the agenda briefing on the 18th of March. Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Would like to draw council's attention to the update on the Bell Reef Pier, and through you seek a response either from the General Manager or from Mr Graham, that the public will be advised over the course of events that would obviously make them fully aware of what's happening in relation to the pier. And secondly, there has been some concern about the use of the seats for actually gutting and actually cleaning the fish. So my question through you too, Mr Graham, I think Mr Mayor is the appropriate person.
I wonder, Alderman James, if we could reserve the questions to question time, please?
Well, again, I just thought that since this matter deals with the pier, that perhaps we could get an update, because there has been some concern from the public.
Well, it's a bit of a stretch, could I allow at this time? We normally do allow our question time, as you know, but...
Yeah, I understand, I still have two questions under question time, but nevertheless, perhaps so Mr Graham could respond to that part of it, please.
Yeah, so, Mr Graham, in regards to the clemours of the...
Through you, Mr Mayor, we're arranging for bait boards to be installed at the piers in between the seats. When I know the timing of those, I'll give a briefing to the alderman.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item 3.4, tabling and petitions, I believe we have one, General Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, we have one petition tonight. It is a petition of 17 signatories requesting council to construct a footpath in Hooky Place, Rokeby. That petition is a compliant petition, and it will be tabled with a report at the next council meeting.
Thank you. Are there any other petitions? There being none. 3.5, reports from outside bodies. Alderman Walker, did you wish to comment in regard to the Copping Waste Authority?
Well, none at this time.
Thank you. In regard to, sorry. Can we balance the volume a little bit between the people online, please? Thank you. In regard to Taswater, I have nothing to report. We did hold a meeting of the Greater Hobart Committee meeting last Wednesday, 16th of March, meeting focused on the Metro Plan, which is under development for Greater Hobart. It does require a bit more work, so it needs to come back to the committee, probably out of session for endorsement, for the purpose of public consultation. So the Metro Plan hasn't been cleared for public consultation yet. We also discussed our budget submissions for the upcoming state budget, and there will be a communique issued in a very near period, and I'll certainly circulate that once it's been issued. 3.6, reports from single and joint authorities. We've covered most of those, I think, what about other special committees and council representations? Alderman Warren.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, it gives me great pleasure to table the minutes from the Reconciliation Action Plan Working Group for the first time. This meeting was held on the 1st of March, it was not the first meeting, we did start meeting last year, but this is, sorry, I should remove my mask while I'm talking, this is the first time for me tabling the minutes, and I'd just like to commend that group and the approach that they're taking, which is a slow and thoughtful approach to make sure that we get this right and that we work in partnership with the First Nations people in Clarence. So I'd like to table those minutes, thanks, Joel.
Thank you, Alderman Warren, and we certainly welcome the committee on, welcome the progress being made in terms of progressing a rap.
Can I just add that we are preparing a memo to give more detail as to what we've been achieving and what we're working towards?
Thank you. Any other reports, Alderman Chong?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I tabled the February minutes from the Richmond Advisory Committee and the December event special committee minutes.
Thank you, other reports? Okay, the 3.8, final item here, is that the information in the weekly briefing reports for the 28th of February, 7th and 14th of March be noted. Alderman James?
I have a question, so do you want to take a move or append a second before I...
No, no, please, we'll deal with it, and then we'll pass the omnibus motion, so...
Yes, look, I refer to the weekly briefing report of the 28th of February 2022 with reference to the appeal against the council's decision, that is, the Tasman Highway, Pittwater Road, and various adjacent lots between Hobart, the International Airport, and Midway Point, Causeway, Cambridge, Robin Lewis, and the P&amp;V Forest Investments, trading as Barilla. My question through you, Mr Mayor, is to Mr Lovell and his capacity of manager planning. Mr Lovell, council's decision at the time when it dealt with this matter had advice as part of a recommendation, you could say, as far as an alternative access off Pittwater Road to enable Milford to have access down Pittwater and an access to their property. Is that still a live issue with respect to the appeal, or given that there has been a determination in relation to the application, is that sort of no longer a matter that needs to be considered by the, by council, or alternatively by DSG?
Through you, Mr Mayor, I believe you're referring to the advice which is retained on the permit that was required to be issued by the tribunal, it's Advice F, which is attached, which is on the second last page.
Sorry, yes. Okay, well, can I just have some clarification, sorry, Mr Mayor, does that mean that it is still valid in the scheme of things? That's really odd, I don't know, Mr Lovell, thank you.
Through, Mr Mayor, yes, it is still valid, it's still an advice of the council, but the onus is between the parties, the representative and the developer to make those arrangements, council isn't a party to it, so it's a matter for them, it's their choice.
Thank you. Being no other questions on the weekly briefing reports, I'll take the motion, the omnibus motions, we adopt the officer's recommendations, I think it's Alderman Pearce or McKendie, all those in favour, raise your hand physically, please, and I can see on the four online alderman, they're taking their Fogdorff glasses off, passing unanimously, this is not easy.
I know.
Thank you. Moving on now to item four, public question time. Item 4.1, public questions on notice, we have one, General Manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor, we actually have three questions on notice. The first two are from Jamie Riddell. The first question is, does the council agree with the sentiment expressed by one alderman on the 28th of February, that if 77% of respondents to a consultation oppose a matter, the results can be interpreted as 525 opposed, and the rest of the population of Clarence in favour?
I'd like to answer that by saying that comments made by individuals should not be attributed to others, or indeed council as a whole.
Thank you, Mayor. The second question is, thinking about the current Skylands consultation, given that the motion carried on the 28th of February was silent on the results of a significant consultation, how does council believe this motion will impact on public opinion regarding the council's claimed commitment to listen to the voice of the community when making decisions?
Council is undertaking public consultation before determining whether or not to support a request to amend the urban growth boundary for the Skylands proposal. We're doing that as a matter of policy and best practice. The issues raised within the consultation will be taken into consideration by council, along with the expert advice and stakeholder feedback when we sit at a future meeting. Council always values the feedback it receives from the community in consultations, and certainly considers the number of responses received, along with the significance of all the issues that are raised.
And we have a third question, which is from Stuart Galloway-Walker. The question is, regarding the proposed change to the urban growth boundary for development of 52 Richardson's Road, given the fact that 77% of residents opposed the proposal, and it had no effect on council's decision, what level of response to community consultation would be required to affect council's decision-making, or is the process, the whole process, a waste of time and money?
Council undertakes public consultation on request to amend the urban growth boundary, and this is a similar answer to the previous one. The issues raised within the consultation are taken into consideration by council, along with other expert advice and stakeholder feedback, when it considers an amendment request. Council does value the feedback it receives from the community in consultations, and always carefully considers the number of responses received, along with the significance of the issues that have been raised. Council sees community consultation as a vital piece of information source in this process, which is why it made a policy in March last year to go to consultation before making decisions on future changes to the urban growth boundary. Sorry, I did have, I have two questions. There were two other questions, I think.
Yes, sorry, we had two questions without notice received this afternoon from Tina Byrne. The first question is, who will be funding the six new neighbourhood centres in the Skyline plans? And the second question is, does Clarence City Council give funding to the two neighbourhood centres that is currently providing excellent services to the community in the Clarence Plains area? We will take both those questions on notice, Mayor.
Thank you. 4.3, answers to questions previously taken on notice, there are none, questions without notice, I believe we've got one or two there as well?
That's all right.
Were they the, Stuart Galloway-Walker?
They've been done, yes.
You've covered those?
Yes, I have.
Item five, deputations by members of the public. As you come forward, I do need to remind you, under meeting regs, we're only able to provide a three-minute window, and there'll be a warning tone at two and a half minutes.
My name is Ms Cheek, and I live in Mornington. I rise tonight to support Alderman Warren's motion on notice, with one caveat that I'll get to. Part A is a no-brainer, and I have nothing to add to the explanatory notes in that respect. Part B, Subpart One, removing the council prayer, I again fully support for a number of reasons. I'm a numbers guy, show me some interesting numbers, and I will invariably go, ooh, nice, more please. One such set of numbers that has piqued my attention is the census numbers on religion, both in Australia more broadly and here in Clarence. I was sort of hoping a motion like this wouldn't come until after June, when the 2021 figures were due to come out, but as I understand it, the procedures review is due next month, so I'm all for getting the ball rolling now. On available figures, the census shows that prevalence of Christianity here and more broadly is on a sharp decline, and I would put good odds on it dipping below 50% when June rolls around. Conversely, the prevalence of persons either declaring no religious affiliation, or not declaring any religious affiliation, and I count myself in that group, is on a sharp incline, and I would expect that to rise above 50% in June, at least in Clarence. So I'd say statistics support the removal of the council prayer, an explicitly Christian prayer, from the meeting procedures, as this is well past being broadly representative. Perhaps more importantly, Clarence City Council, like all organisations at all levels of government in Australia, is a secular organisation, and it's baffling to me that, in the year of our Lord, 2022, there are still some number opening their meetings with any sort of religious observance. So on a point of bafflement, it's another big tick for me. It's a little hard for me to be enthusiastic about Subpart Two. While I am sure we all agree that we could do with more quiet reflection in our lives, and I think there's another item tonight that illustrates that perfectly, I do have to question adding length to meetings that are already regularly run quite long and late. Including the closed meeting, and apart from the omnibus motion, there are 10 items requiring a vote and potential debate tonight. I can personally deal with a likely somewhat awkward minute of silence every three weeks, but if you can't, I would suggest amending the motion. Regardless, the motion is solid and commendable, and I'll be interested to see where the debate goes, eight items from now. Thank you for your attention. For the record, a copy of the text of this deputation and some supplementary charts were emailed to all aldermen at noon today.
Thank you very much, Mr Cheek. I'd now like to advise a council intends to serve as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act. Item 6.1 is a development application at six Saltwater Rise, Seven Mile Beach, for a dwelling and outbuilding. Have a move or a second, please. Moved, Alderman Pearce, seconded Alderman Newington, Alderman Pearce.
Thank you, Mayor, having a look at the site, I see nothing wrong with this, there was a question asked about size, I think, but even the size of the outbuilding is only four metres high, which can be six metres high, and, I mean, the block is extremely large, and it's, you know, a fair way away from where this is going to be done from any existing area, so, Mayor, I totally support the recommendation.
Thanks, Alderman Pearce, Alderman Newington?
Yeah, look, I mean, blind fairly considered this one, you know, it's a rural residential area, and you build sheds on those sort of places to give you the storage for your machinery and your things to run and look after, 10,000 square metres, I mean, the fact that we've even got to debate this one is a waste of our time, and I won't waste anyone else's time by saying any more than no, I encourage everyone to vote for this one.
Thank you, any other speakers? Okay, so I don't see a need for write a reply, Alderman Pearce?
No, Mayor, thank you.
The motion is recommending approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour, please raise your hands. And I think that's carried unanimously, thank you. That concludes our business as a planning authority. Moving on to governance, item 7.4.1, that the South East Region Jobs Hub, that council authorised the establishment of the association and adopt the incorporated association rules. Okay, if someone moves and sends that, please. Thank you, Alderman McKendie. And Alderman Newington, I think, just put you to it, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Alderman McKendie?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor, I think the recommendation for me is fairly specific, and nothing further.
Thank you. Alderman Newington?
I mean, in principle, I mean, it might say it's a coordinated approach to, you know, jobs and, you know, employment and training in this space, the only concern I have is, you know, we've got plenty of other organisations doing that sort of work out there, hopefully this one doesn't look a joke regarding existing services, but I encourage all of us to keep a close eye on how it performs, and, you know, make sure we keep our eye on all the losses to the, to the specific outcomes that occur, because we are to the people that we're asking to have both of these organisations help them through the, you know, the job hunting and the job training and the retraining side of things, so let's hope it's all a positive thing for the wider community, especially after the impacts of COVID has over the last couple of years, so let's hope it all works out well.
Thank you, other speakers? Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think the public ought to be aware that the South East Region Development Association, or SERDA, is made up of Sorrel, Tasman, Clarence, and Glamorgan Spring Bay councils, and operate in Tasmania South East. I think that's important, because this is an area in which there needs to be some concern, and I'm pleased that at least the Department of Premier and Cabinet has decided, or has initiated this establishment of this association in relation to that. I did ask a question, or pose a question to, at our briefing on Friday, and I referred to page nine, under auditor nine, and my question at the time was, is that a requirement to be a registered company auditor? And to date, I haven't received a response, unless it was sent through to me over the weekend, but I don't recall, so we'll ask the question through you too, perhaps, is it to the CFO, or is it...
Mr Craskey, can you help us in that regard?
Through you, Mr Mayor, we'll certainly take note of the feedback and pass it on as part of that amendment to the rooms if council so wishes.
Well, having said that, you know, it's fairly important, we, and I did give some note, provide some notice on Friday at the meeting, and so I'm surprised that we haven't had a response since...
Well, it's been a weekend in between.
I know, but I think the General Manager would have received my nine-point on Saturday night that I wrote to him, because I was feeling that it was necessary to discuss matter on the agenda for Monday night, so nevertheless, you know, I can work late at night, so I thought over the weekend I may have had a response. But nevertheless, having said that, it is disappointing, I haven't received a response, but nevertheless, I will endorse this, because I think it's necessary, and I think that the, at least the state government is taking some action, and I think it's quite pertinent that those South East councils, which perhaps over the longer term, we may see some merger with it with respect to that, but nevertheless, at the moment, it's well done, and I would like to, on behalf of council, thank the government for at least proceeding to make a necessary action in relation to this job hunt.
Thank you, Alderman James, any other speakers?
Yes.
Alderman Walker?
Thank you, mine is more of a question, as you look on the page 36, you notice that whilst there are no financial implications arising from the establishment of the association for the draft rules or the strategic plan, there may be future financial support requests depending on the activities of the association, which will be a matter for council at that point in time. Can you give me some sort of examples of what a future council might be up for, or might be asked to prevail upon?
Not at this stage, I can't personally, and I'm the representative on SERTA, but there may be things in the future. I guess it's just whatever comes up would have to be subject to council consideration, deliberation anyway, and goes through the budgeting process. But I don't have anything at my fingertips, no. Alderman Walker?
I understand that it goes through those processes, but also the way it's written in the, in the council minutes as it comes up and the way it's written on the agenda, it's, it is potential liabilities for us and it's around expectation management. So I am going to, I'm still inclined to support it. I do see some upside, but things like this really should be spelt out because we make decisions for now that are decisions impact on the future.
And that's noted. Thank you, Alderman Walker. We will explore that a bit further and get some information to you. So thank you for the question. Alderman Edmonds?
Yeah, thank you very much. Really quickly, just to that point, and this wasn't what I was going to bring up, but on the SWOT analysis that unfortunately I don't have a page number for because it's in the attachment, the three threats to this organisation or to this jobs hub is the first dot point is actually funding, second dot point is about availability of workers, and the third one is lack of affordable housing solutions in job areas, which I think is worth noting that third point, but perhaps based on the speaker before me, it's worth noting the first one as well. I'll still support it because I think it's worth pursuing, but it is interesting to note that those are the threats to the success of this organisation.
And in that regard, it has been necessary to form this association to implement the jobs hub so that the grant money from the state government can be employed, and that was basically the intent, to ensure that we get efficient use of public money. Any other speakers? Alderman Pearce?
Thank you, Mayor, and I thank the last two speakers for what they said because reading this, I wasn't sure how to vote, and I'm looking at it. What I'm a bit concerned about, Mayor, that I know it's part of Clarence, but how often are we going to get updates on this? Because there's a lot of wording in there, and I'm not quite sure, when I read this and I'm reading most of the constitution, I'm thinking, what's this group actually going to do? And you've explained quite a bit of it. Thank you for that. But hopefully we'll get regular updates on this so we can actually judge what's going on here.
Certainly do that. Other speakers? Write a reply. Alderman Kendy?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Nothing further to add really, other than I probably should have mentioned at the start that I have had a briefing from the Mayor of Surrell, and I know the community are very excited about this project. And I do believe, I cannot be sure, but I think there is another area that's opening up for development with affordable housing in that region. So fingers crossed on that one. And I seek my colleagues' support.
Thank you. So the motion is that we authorise the establishment and adopt the incorporated association rules. All those in favour? And I think that's unanimous. Thank you. Item, get it right, a minute. Item seven point four point two, significant tree vandalism for Blessington Street, South Arm on this occasion. The, thank you, Alderman Kendy. Do I have a second, please? Alderman Edmonds. Thank you, Alderman Kendy.
Sorry, Mr Mayor. Nothing further from me. I think it's, we've discussed it, we've workshopped it, and I'm very happy with the recommendation. Seek colleagues' support.
I'll keep my mask on. Nothing to say, sorry.
Okay, any other speakers? Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I, I understand that we still have a, a $10,000 reward for those who in fact have, or witnessed any of those vandalism of trees down at Esplanade.
Actually, it's for anyone who's able to provide information that leads to a conviction.
Thank you for that clarification. That's right. So that is still alive, I would imagine, and obviously there's people are aware of that, hopefully. So also, we are hoping in this case to have another $10,000 reward leading to those who may be able to provide information in relation to who vandalised the trees at Blessington. So my question through you to the appropriate officer is, how are we going in fact in relation to the Esplanade? And have we received any nibbles? Or have we received any action that may be taken to either reward those persons or persons who may have come forward, alternatively to actually say that we can basically take the signs down and therefore the reward will no longer be applicable? Perhaps I could have an answer to that, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, Mayor. I'd noticed we've lost the screen. Are we still live? Other Aldermen online can hear? Thank you. The answer to that question is we haven't had any, any referrals to us in regard to Alexandra Esplanade, but anecdotally, we understand that the offer of a reward has created a degree of discussion amongst the community, which has raised awareness as well as promoted the issue of, of the trees themselves. We'd expect the same and hopefully a bit more from Blessington Street.
Do we have any other speakers?
On the issue of rewards, the reward shouldn't be judged by whether we get any information or not. Secondly, if we do get information, it'd be the police, and the police would treat that with utter confidence. So there's no way we would know about that. The important thing with rewards is it acts as a huge deterrent to someone repeating this action. Because every time they do, they know that there's someone out there who might see themselves with the opportunity to make a quick 10 grand. So it's part of the, of the model of doing it. And, and, and although that is part of the public, other measures need to be required, but the people out there need to be rest assured that we're not hanging all our investigative capability simply on the reward. A reward is an adjunct, and it serves as a deterrent, and this is a huge warning to anyone out there, as they've done this time, you keep doing this and sooner or later, someone's going to see you, and sooner or later, you're going to make quick 10 grand. And that's the message that you're trying to get out there.
Thank you. Alderman Van Beter?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, some of the Aldermen who've spoken have referred to the Alexandra Esplanade issue, which is similar to this one. The officer's recommendation in relation to that particular instance noted that, as part of recommendation, that we installed large screens and also put signage in. At the time, there was an alternative motion from Alderman Walker, which dropped both the screens and the signage. Subsequently, there has been signage put up, which is very hard to support. However, I am going to support this particular recommendation, but I believe that we still need to have as many deterrents as possible. And Alderman Mulga has spoken about the reward deterrent. But I think perhaps if this sort of action continues in this area and other areas, then we might need to rethink the idea of the screen. Because we need to look at bringing this to the public's attention and to making sure that the perpetrator is brought to justice. And I think we need to have as many measures in place as we possibly can. I know some people believe, and some of our Aldermen believe, that if we were to put screening in, that is going to disadvantage some residents in the area in terms of their amenity and their future. But perhaps we might need to have every deterrent possible in the future, because we cannot have this occurring on a regular basis in various areas of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Van Beter. Other speakers? Alderman Walker?
Yes, thank you. It is a concerning matter. I condemn the attack at Alexandra Esplanade as much as I condemn this one. I fully support the reward mechanism, and that reward is a disincentive. The signs that went up there, which were not in conflict with my motion, are a disincentive. The screens, I would be willing to entertain once you prove to me that the person that perpetrated it is directly across from that site. And if you're not insinuating that, if you're not stating that, then also understand that screens can act as an incentive to put a screen in front of someone's house. And punishment needs to fit the crime and it needs to, needs to punish the perpetrator and not innocent others. So it is a complicated matter, and it's a very disappointing matter, and we need to keep pursuing it. But again, I, I'm uncomfortable with punishing people for something they haven't committed. It's just not my style. It's certainly de resur in many elements of today's society, but I'm not a fan of it.
Thanks, Alderman Walker. Any other speakers? Alderman Blomley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. And like, like with previous speakers, I'm absolutely disgusted by what we, what we're discussing tonight and what we experienced, Bill Reeve, Marge Chikir. It's just not on. And the willful banishment needs to stop, and I take the comments by previous speakers regarding deterrence, and this is not unique to Clarence City Council and our coastline. I know in some of the early workshops, we looked at potential adjurants, but my view is that in most of the other jurisdictions where this has in the past been commonplace, they've found a way or is it true, and it does work? And I think that maybe we need a bit more work to look at what's, what's working elsewhere because, you know, waiting for big screens up may or may not be the answer. But either way, we can't have a situation where there are people willfully murdering trees in our city.
Thank you. And no other, Alderman Pearce?
Mayor, I totally agree with the recommendation, but I'm just going to ask you something else. If someone had a tree, and not a lot of trees, actually came to council and said, look, I'm building this or I've moved into here, and, and I'm quite happy to pay for the tree to be relocated. Now, I totally agree what we've got here, but if we thought of that, because somewhere along the line, that may be an option, not for the night, but somewhere along the line.
Yeah, thanks, Alderman Pearce. We do have a tree removal and replacement policy, which I'm sure would apply under those circumstances.
I hope so.
Right. Any other speakers? Write a reply, please. Alderman Kendy?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor. Just enjoy a moment of having my mask off, really. So I just, I seek colleagues' support.
One of the very few benefits of chairing the meeting. In that case, can I put the motion that we adopt the recommendation in terms of that vandalism at Blessington Street? All those in favour? And I think that's unanimous. Thank you. Item seven point four point three, a review of elected members' workplace environment. Alderman Warren?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to move an alternative motion, which has been circulated to my colleagues. The motion in the agenda suggests that or recommends that we note the report. After discussion, we, we decided it was, or a number of us decided it was worth going one step further and actually recommending some action as a result of the report. So my motion, and I will read that for the benefit of anyone who doesn't have it in front of them, is that council notes the recommendations of the executive summary, which is included in the agenda, of the confidential and legally privileged elected members' workplace environment review report, and refers the recommendations to a council workshop for further consideration.
Thank you. A second, please. Thank you, Alderman Kendy. Would you like to speak to it?
I would still like to speak to it.
Absolutely. And then the clock's starting now.
Thank you. Thank you. Look, I, I do commend the mayor for instigating this report. It was really good to have somebody independent and objective to talk to all those people who, who decided to take part and establish that we, yes, we do have issues in council. There, there are some issues of behaviour. It's unfortunate that the outcomes of the report have made, put Clarence in the media headlines again this week in a very unfavourable light. And reading the comments online, it was very much the flavour of, we have too many councils, all the councillors are hopeless, we should sack the lot of them. And I would say to anyone who feels that way, there are council elections in November. If you're not impressed by the behaviour of your councillors, it is within your power to change that. Look, the original motion was simply to note the report. So I don't believe the intention of this motion tonight is to debate the contents of the report, whether or not we should have training or whether he was at fault or she was at fault and all that finger pointing and stuff that's got us here in the first place. So I would encourage colleagues just to stick to the motion, which is, do we or do we not note the report? And if we note the report, what do we want to do with it? And I believe the best course of action is for us to discuss that in a workshop. I commend the motion to my colleagues.
Thank you, Alderman Warren. Alderman Kendy?
Nothing really to add to that, other than in our briefing the other day before the alternative was composed, for want of a better word, I'd actually just written what's next. So, you know, we've all seen the report. It ain't pretty. It is pretty accurate, and I think the concerning thing is when we're talking about elections and what comes next is, is, you know, the, the amount of publicity that is out there that is not good for many councils, not just ours, is that where are those people that are going to come along to follow on from us, who's going to want to put up their hand to stand for election unless we get this sort of stuff sorted out? So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kendy. Other speakers? Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I will say from the outset that I did not support the motion that was tabled under your hand, which you recommended, as listed on the agenda on page ninety one. And also to the, in that motion that you moved and council endorsed, there was a clause and a quote, "The review should anonymously canvass elected representatives and senior staff and deliver a report confidential where appropriate." Now, in my hand, I have that report, and it has not been tabled in this particular agenda item because I think we are taking the advice, and I stand corrected on this, that the, this report, and I'm quoting from the report, this report is confidential and participation was voluntary and on a confidential basis. So one of the reasons why I did not support this particular motion was for the fact that the ratepayers of Clarence paid $20,000 to Edge Legal, and it was on the basis that Edge Legal, in their report, said it's confidential. Now, having said that, and I understand where Alderman Warren's coming from, but the question, even though she has made a couple of slight changes to, to the motion and refers the recommendation to a workshop for further consideration, et cetera, it still notes the recommendations of the executive summary. So the executive summary has been listed in the agenda for all and sundry, that is, the ratepayers at Clarence, to read. And that really upsets me in the sense that the, in the bodyment of the report, there are some real positives about what the Aldermen and senior staff do work together and make this council, in many respects, viable and also a one that basically people can look up to because of its decision-making process. So if we turn to the executive summary, which has been listed in the agenda, if you turn to page, to the G, G, H, I and J of those recommend, and K of those recommendations, it, it goes through and really puts us in a bad light. Whereas in the, where in the entirety of the report, there are some real positives. And that is why I would have thought that the whole report, and there's no names being mentioned, there may be examples of people who may be There may be, uh, examples of people who may be interpreted as being what they have said or what they may not have said. But within the report, there is no problems at all with any person being named or their, uh, conduct is uncoored in relation to it. So why can't we have the positives in this report released to the public? And, and they are there in the report and they go to great lengths. And I even spoke at the meeting on Friday at the agenda briefing and said, why is this being confidential? The ratepayers have paid the twenty thousand for it. We only get in the executive summary where the aldermen are really, and I just wanna quote, "The biggest concern," this is H, "The biggest concern expressed by senior managers was how the aldermen engage with each other." Workshop described as being adversarial in nature, with aldermen talking over the top of each other and not listening and using phones, et cetera. I, some, uh, senior managers were also concerned as what would leave the room to be used for political purposes and at times a misrepresentation of the facts, et cetera, et cetera. So you've got G, H, I, J, K, really putting us in a bad light, in my opinion. Whereas in the rest of the report, Edge Legal have gone out of their way to make it that there is good working relationships. And, uh, and for those who have read the report, and it was circulated, and thank you to the communications manager, he circulated the report on, uh, over the weekend or Friday. And if you read the report, you would see that there are some very good examples of where the senior managers in this place and also the aldermen work very closely together and Edge Legal has made that comment. So I will not be supporting this motion because the words, um, "Confidential and legally privileged elected members' work, workplace environment review report" is saying that it's confidential. That the, the, the community paid the twenty-odd thousand and well, it came out of ratepayers' monies. And therefore they are entitled to have in front of them the pluses as well as the negatives in relation to this. So I think it's a shame that, that the confidentiality that has been mentioned by Edge Legal, uh, as part of that, has not been released.
Any other speakers? Alderman Pierce?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I do support Alderman Warren's alternative motion. I think that's the way to go. Look, I've seen some things in this council that this term I, I haven't liked. Uh, one thing disgusts me and I've been yelled at by another alderman, but, you know, you could, that alderman could have done the same if he was just talking to me as I asked him to do. But to use a word in the media, toxic, I don't consider this council toxic. Sometimes the staff are not treated well and, you know, I, I'm not, I don't wanna talk about the staff because, uh, you know, they're put there, it's in this issue and that's why I think we need to talk further. But most of us work ninety percent of the time really well together. It's only that ten percent that really does worry me, especially in workshops where people do think they can talk over everyone and whatever. But I, I think ever since this report come, has come out, I think things have got a lot better. I really do. So that's why I'd like to discuss a bit further. And that's why Alderman Warren, I think, you know, your recommendation is to, to take it further is the way to go. Because I don't want people thinking, uh, because a lot of people think we meet every three weeks. They don't realise we're here forty-eight Mondays of the year. They think we've got an easy job. And they don't realise the pressure. We probably get more abused by the ratepayers of this city than what we do by any other alderman. I've seen some terrible things online and a lot of people should be ashamed of themselves. And I'm standing up here and I'm saying it, I'm telling them because, you know, I'm not scared to, to say that one person put something on, uh, an email, uh, on Facebook about me. So I went round to him and I said, "You've got ten minutes to get off or I'll sue you." I did check with the lawyer first to make sure it was defamatory, which it was. So these are, sometimes these are things you've just gotta do. Because some ratepayers and residents can think they can do whatever they like. And I think somewhere along the line, we've gotta say, "No, we're not gonna accept that."
Thanks, Alderman Pierce. Other speakers? Alderman Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I congratulate Alderman Warren on moving this motion. As the object of some of, some of the, as the object of some of the more unfortunate issues, she is the most appropriate person to lead the charge in finding a way forward. But the report is historic. The commissioning of this report and the commencement of broadcast quality recordings of council and workshops have markedly improved the behaviour and the environment of this council. Yes, Mr. Mayor, video surveillance is a deterrent in anti-social behaviour. But the report, I believe, is wrong. Clarence does not have a toxic culture. Culture is a shared attitude, values and beliefs as expressed in the modus operandi of behaviour. Unfortunately, tags like corruption, bullying and toxic culture are easily thrown, thrown around. So it is so disappointing to see an expert in this field pander to the media thirst for conflict by describing the unco- un, the occasional, albeit unacceptable behaviours of a few as a toxic culture. In this chamber, in the workshops and in the communities, there are well documented examples of councillors being aggressive, shouting, threatening, mocking, denigrating. This does not excuse those behaviours, but isolated incidents do not a culture make. These unpleasant events are perpetrated by a few. They are not the way most of us behave, nor do any of us behave this way all the time. Some quite legitimately feel bullied and intimidated and there is no excuse for the behaviour. But it is a personal issue, not a cultural one. It just makes the work environment unnecessarily unpleasant. It is disappointing that the report considers that the antagonism between myself and another alderman is somehow the context of the text of this cost, of this toxic culture. The facts are that most of the behaviours described in the report are not between us, but relate to the behaviour of others. For example, neither myself nor my protagonist have engaged in the vilification of staff, which is such a central part of this report. If, yet others have actually been counseled for doing so. My protagonist is well known for hyperbolic media statements expressing outrage at just about every political opponent or event, including those in his own party. I do not initiate these tirades, but I do reserve the right to self-defence. That your history means I have more and better ammunition is something you need to consider before you attack me. The examples of aggressive behaviour are well documented. We all know perpetrators in the history of losing a temper. And for that reason, I sought to initiate anger management training for councils. Not just to reduce these incidents, but to build resilience because the history of these attacks, as evidenced in other councils, is more likely to come from the community. And we would all benefit from knowing how to manage anger, not in our, only in ourselves, but also in others. And when an alderman responds with, "I don't like being tagged as someone who needs anger management training", then this report is a mirror that suggests you probably do. I also note that under the Workplace Health and Safety Act, the general manager is responsible for safety in the workplace. And as such may, or in the context of this report, is duty-bound to require elected members to attend compulsory training. I look forward to discussing the recommendations in workshops and further debate as they come to council. I would also like to see the full report disclosed, warts and all folks, because the executive summary does not create an accurate picture of the issues within this report. We do not have a toxic culture. There is room for improvement. There are things we could all do better, myself included.
Thank you. Other speakers? Uh, Alderman Urinton?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, look, I'll agree with a couple of the previous speakers in relation to the, uh, you know, the use of the word toxic and those sort of things. Well, I certainly don't support, um, anything that's gone on being portrayed in that way. Um, you know, as a few have said, there's some issues that come up from time to time that, you know, we've been asked to address them. While I think, um, the plan does bring up some of that, I, I don't think there's anywhere near dealing with the real issues that, that are at play here. I mean, we need to remember that this whole motion and this whole thing started as a, um, you know, an anger management, um, you know, recommendation from one alderman who took it to the media and basically tried to, uh, point the finger at a few of us, or all of us indirectly, um, rather than keep this sort of stuff in-house and give us a chance to talk about it ourselves. And I mean, to be honest, some of that sort of activity, um, and we've got another one tonight, um, is part of the issue that we see here, where it's, where there is, there's an element of blatant politicking that goes on by, by some people, you know, at, at the expense of council and certainly at the expense of, of some of their colleagues, which is really what this is all about. And that's why I didn't support the initial, um, report being investigated at the beginning because I knew that there would be no way that it would come up with a way to actually tackle that issue, explain it, come up with a way of dealing with it without, you know, not having confidentially at the centre of confidentiality side, at the centre of the whole thing. Um, you know, I think, you know, we all have had the opportunity to reflect on things that have gone on. And it seems some haven't, some haven't. But, you know, the, the real issue here is the thing that really concerns me about all this is certainly there's no, no bullying or aggressive behaviour or, or those sort of things should, should ever be, um, be accepted. Um, and I think we can all agree on that. But the thing about, that concerns me most about the report and the things that's also going on, the, the issues that were raised in the report in relation to the, to the lack of confidentiality from meetings and workshops, the misrepresentation of facts that have occurred at different times to support particular agendas that, that certain aldermen that wanna push. The attempts to undo strategic decisions already adopted or already consigned in an underway. Um, and the unrealistic expectations placed on senior managers when we get reports or things that come back that certain people don't like. And I mean, they're the things that really concern me about the things that go on. And if you're talking about bullying and giving people a hard time, well, that's where I see that happening. And yet the statement of, uh, what do we call it? The statement of expectations doesn't even mention the politicking aspect of all of the things that I, that I've just talked about there as a way of moving forward. And, and I raised this in, you know, we talked about in the workshop the other day and, you know, I said, I said that then and I'll say it again. I mean, unless we're prepared to sit back and recognise where the politicking is going on and why some of these things being raised in the media first without giving colleagues a chance to discuss them. You know, some sensitive issues that come up from time to time should be discussed behind closed doors, um, to start with, rather than being played out in the media. And that, that's some of where my, certainly where my frustrations come through in the last, you know, twelve months. And, and all this only started really, you know, over twelve months ago, probably a little bit longer, you know, and everything was following up until then. So, and that's when all this misrepresenta- misresent- misrepresent- misrepresentation of facts, undoing strategic decisions, that's where I stepped from. So, you know, we've got to be honest with each other. No, that, that's what happened. But, look, you know, I, I didn't support the spending of twenty thousand dollars before. Um, I don't think it's come up with anything that really is gonna make things work a lot better. I mean, the code shouldn't basically, the co- the existing code of conduct for aldermen should really cover all of this stuff. But I mean, how do you say, how do you put in there, don't do any blatant politicking to further your own political career or your agenda or whatever, at the expense of your colleagues? And unless we actually address that, um, some of the angst that gets between us, the frustration and some of the annoying things that we perceive that happen to each of us from time to time, none of that's gonna go away. So, um, you know, I, you know, like I said, the, the statement of expectations didn't really do a lot for me. Didn't really explain the real issue, like I said. Um, and I mean, we need to get back to thinking long-term and strategically and making, you know, the big tough decisions, rather than most of our time going round in circles on, on things like this. Because to be honest, I don't think it's gonna really deal with the issues that are at hand here. Um, and I think, you know, we've got plenty of strategic issues in front of us coming up that we need to focus on. Um, and I, and I've worked with some of the colleagues. Things have been a little bit better. There's been less things playing out in the media until this came up and a couple of other things. But, look, let's just focus on what we elected to do. Um, and I, uh, and I hope that we can do that.
Alderman Walker?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, spoiler alert, I'm supporting this motion. Um, COVID management, especially the financials and also the community impact, uh, will loom in the anniversarum time as the overriding thing for councils in the this term of, uh, government. Um, and, uh, you know, I actually think we did better than, than any other council through that twenty-twenty budgeting process and prioritisation process. Um, we disagreed on a fair bit, but it was a huge deal. And actually, we weren't that disagreeable when we were disagreeing. And we came to a pretty good outcome. None of us got all what we wanted. But the actual, um, the pillars and the management of that is a, is a legacy that I think we can be proud of. Um, however, councillor conduct and behaviour matters, um, well, if you, you look at the twenty eighteen, twenty-two term across the state as a whole, there's just been a slew of, uh, councillor and mayor registrations across the state. And we only found out on Friday that the latest is first term, uh, human mayor Beck Enders. And I can say Beck, Mayor Enders was a dynamo, a champion for a community and always brimming with enthusiasm. And, and her management during the bushfire crisis, which was on top of COVID, that was exemplary. And, um, that, that resignation represents a big loss for the human community and also I think for local government sector as a whole. I wish her and John all the very best for the future and I thank her for outstanding contributions. Um, but I wonder whether there weren't some cultural matters, um, that may have hastened this resignation. And, um, maybe that's, that's a positive that we can take from this, that we are working on something that might be useful for other, uh, councils. Um, and we only have to look at, uh, you know, federal parliaments. Um, we don't know what, uh, what the exact cause of Kimberly Kitchen's heart attack was, but we know that she was under profound stress and I am profoundly saddened by that. Uh, I'm a political tragic and, um, she's, you know, I would have to toss it between her and Joe Button as the most significant, um, Victorian Labour senator in my lifetime. Just an outstanding person who would have been an amazing foreign minister. Um, look, how do, how do I put this? Um, you know, if interested, ratepayers, uh, can watch the itchy and scratchy show on TV for free. But they don't need to or wish to pay for it on their local council. And I think some of them would suggest they've been seeing a bit of it on this council in recent times. And it's odious when councils focus on themselves and it's borderline poisonous when it's about their own substandard conduct. However, we are where we are. And it might not be where we were in the fourteen to eighteen term. And I'm sorry that it's come to the need for this, but, you know, the first step, they say, is acknowledging there's a problem. Um, now, I might disagree on the scale, on the scope of the problem, but local government isn't a game, being a councillor isn't a game. It is a privilege. And it's actually a great responsibility. Uh, the impact we have on our community is often far more felt than if a contract for a submarine isn't as good as it should be or, um, you know, a tender for, for a TAFE system across the country isn't, uh, what it quite should be. Um, look, I did support the motion by the mayor for this review. Some of the findings I agree with, some I'm not entirely convinced of. But I hope, as I said earlier, that it is a template for other councils. Now, I have no chance in five, with the remainder of my time of, of going through points A to W in the report. Um, you know, G, H, I and K were mentioned by, uh, a fellow alderman. Um, well, you know, that's what the report said. Uh, don't argue about it. Just work on the fact of, of how you could do better on those fronts, whether you accept the magnitude of them or not. That's, that's our job. We, we get a modest stipend to do it, but we, we, we're paid for this privilege. Um, for what it's worth, I'm committed to play my part in improving the culture because the council staff are worth it and they're worth us doing our best to try and retain them. Um, diligent elected members, uh, are worth it. Um, and you don't wanna see talent leading councils. I mentioned Beck Enders just at the beginning, for example. Uh, furthermore to the, the point, um, you know, I believe in competition and, uh, it's in all residents' best interests, it's in democracy's best interest that there is a big field of people to choose from with a range of skills and perspectives and talents, uh, when the election's on in six months' time. So...
Thanks, Alderman Walker. Um, any other speakers? Uh, Alderman?
Well, don't wanna jump in. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Mayor. Appreciate the, uh, opportunity to make comment. Um, the thing I've been reflecting on, uh, since about Friday is, is, uh, like, why, why do we, why do we put our hands up to, to, to come here and, and what do we wanna achieve out of it? Um, and, you know, and think about what you, what the, the version of you a month before you came on council was saying about why they wanted to do it. And, you know, I think for most of us, uh, certainly thinking back, uh, to la- back to last campaign, it's about wanting to make the council, or the city, as good a place to live, but also have the council reflect, reflect us. And we're the 12 that are put here, I suppose. So it becomes a bit of an interesting conundrum around, you know, your own values. Some of the things mentioned in this report, I really don't think people should be given the impression you have to go along to get along in local government. Like, there is a room for people to have views, but to probably think about the way they express them. And, you know, and to, you know, there is a way to agree to disagree. And it is a bit like sport, probably, that there's a white line as you leave the, as you leave the chamber, perhaps, where we can still do the proverbial, you know, go into the other team's rooms sort of thing. So I guess, and I think Covid has impacted that a lot. Hearing a lot of comments on how things are workshopped, or how issues are brought to the council. Well, it's very difficult to do that when you can't see people outside of a very snappy moment. I really enjoyed a story on ABC News last night by Will Murray about culture in councils and why people are leaving, but what is also keeping people around. He did a good job of getting a good cross section of people to comment. And it's certainly food for thought for me. I don't necessarily have answers out of it, but it was definitely a good way to take stock, coincidentally, to obviously our own issues coming into the public eye. They talked about some of the issues about public attacks, low pay, how they're losing people, and, you know, and people's reputations being damaged by being on councils and having to follow things like the planning scheme, and how personally that can be taken by people when you actually, are you representing people or planning scheme? Anyway, we didn't need this report to tell us things were well and truly awry here. But I would echo the comments by a few people that I think there has been an improvement generally by most people since the interview. Even the interview process itself, I think, was probably good to get some things off people's chests, which I think, again, comes back to that thing that we haven't been as well glued together as we could have been because of. But, you know, maybe we could have done more during Covid, and I probably all have some thoughts on how we could have done that better. You know, we've all made attempts to try and build culture in different ways, or at least, certainly now I have. I think a few people touched on not agreeing with every single thing in the report, or the scale of each issue. I don't disagree with that. But I think we have to take this report in good faith. A lot of effort went into it. And, you know, there's a lot of community interest in it. And, you know, it's probably more about learning and less about point scoring, I think. I saw some public comments saying, this, this report is a mirror for 12 people, or potentially even more. This is not a shopping list to pick the, how many points we've got, up to W, to pick a few letters out of it, to make a little acronym about, no, those are the issues, because that's not where I see myself, or whatever. If anyone reads this report and can't see themselves in it to some extent, they need a massive reality check, because any of us could sit around and go, okay, well, no, that is, no, that is, no, that is, or those are. But what's the point in that? It's not going to take us forward. But I do appreciate that we should workshop this further. But it's a chance to take stock on all of our behaviour and the way we've treated people, but also to perhaps think about the, how you would handle it, even if you do still feel aggrieved about how something came to you and what came out. So, look, I'm thinking of the word respect, and that's the word I'm going to try to apply to how I think about this going forward. But to really, like, reflect on how things have gone, and even if it wasn't something that I was involved in, how could I have helped or de-escalated that? And honestly, I just think the 12 of us all have a role to play in that. And anyone who's going to wash their hands of the way that the culture has gone here is delusional.
Thanks, Alderman Edmonds. Other speakers? Case, right, Alderman Chong, sorry.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I will start by outing myself as one of the aldermen who did take part in this review. I know not everybody did. And I found it a profoundly difficult experience. And difficult because, as others have said, most of the time, we actually work well together. We work as individuals, we work in small groups, even as a whole council, we often work well together, and we work well with the staff well. But there are times when we don't. And I guess what, for me, this report says is it's somebody from outside coming in and talking to us and going, all of these points are valid. Some of them may be more or less, some of them may happen more or less often, but at some point, all of these things were brought up by the people that were interviewed. I certainly didn't bring all of them up, but all of us brought some of them up, obviously. So it's really important, as several aldermen said, that we look at this and we reflect on what we could do better in any situation, whether we are instigators, whether it's being done to us, or whether we're just sitting on the sidelines thinking, oh, that's awful, shouldn't let that happen. We need to take ownership and do something. So I do think it's really important that we all support Alderman Warren's motion, that we take this back to a workshop, and we look at this report, and we decide, what are we going to do next?
Have a nap.
Off is the answer.
Have you had any red tail?
Thought I moved you to tears.
Other ear speakers, Alderman Blomley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I've talked about this evening, like the other, like my other colleagues, it was a privilege to be elected, re-elected in 2018. And we have, as Alderman Walker touched on, dealt with some really big issues. And I think that overall, we've done a pretty good job. Now, I was one of the eight that did participate in the each legal interview process. And in reading the finished product, the report, it did provide an opportunity to reflect. And for me, it was to ask myself the question, have I always brought my best self to council by interactions? And the honest answer is no, I haven't always done that. But what this report has now done, of course, is to highlight, based on those interviews and observations, also seen staff, where we can, as an organisation, improve and ensure that we all bring our best selves. It's not about finger pointing, it's not about apportioning blame, it's about working together, it's about collaborating in the best interests of the residents and ratepayers of our city. And, Mr. Mayor, I will just touch on one of the, one of the dot points, that being W. It's analogy, it's an analogy that I often use, and I'll point directly from the report. And this is talking about achieving really good outcomes, best outcomes for Clarence. And W reads, "A helpful guide to achieve this is to adopt the analogy that councils are like a board of directors tasked with strategic planning and the overall responsibility of good governors. The general manager and council staff are to implement the board's strategic plan, and members of the community are like shareholders. The board is to act in the overall interest of the shareholders for the long-term viability of the organisation. Sometimes, this means individual shareholder interest will not be served, and the right decision may be unpopular or even vehemently disagreed with by some shareholders and individual board members. This analogy is, generally speaking, consistent with sections of the Act and the Good Governors Guide for Local Government in Tasmania." Mr. Mayor, that's a very Act analogy. And I think that if we, as Alderman Edmonds suggests, stop, take stock, reflect on bringing our best selves. We are, we have been elected, it is an honour to be here, it's an honour to serve the people of Clarence, and it's up to all of us now to ensure that we bring our best selves to every, every direction we have with each other, with the community, and with our staff, to ensure that we are delivering for our shareholders the very best that we can as the board of directors of the City of Clarence.
Thank you. Alderman Blomley, sorry, are you... Okay, sorry. Look, a lot has been said tonight. And can I say that the sentiment that's expressed around the table tonight about the capacity of the council to work together, intention to do so, makes me very proud to be part of this council. I do think it's important, we support Alderman Warren's motion to talk through further. If we can, by way of setting in place some standards and some ideas and processes over the next six months so that new council comes in and can benefit from our experience, then I think Clarence City Council is going to be an outstanding place for a long time to come. So I'd like to congratulate everyone who spoke tonight, the spirit in which it's been presented, and the determination. We have improved a lot. We went through a dark patch about 12 months ago, and it's really good to see things emerge from there with that right reply, Alderman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do thank my colleagues for their thoughtful contributions this evening. It does give me heart that there is a way forward, and that we can have a civil and productive discussion when we bring this to a workshop. I'm going to restrict my right of reply comments to those who expressed concern about the actual motion itself. And so I do thank my colleague Alderman James for his comments and his concerns about the fact that we're only making the executive summary available to our ratepayers. I think that was a compromise. It's always a balancing act, but when we commissioned the original report, we needed to give a level of comfort to people who were going to take part, that they could be frank and fearless in their discussion, and that it wouldn't necessarily be on the public record. So that may be a decision we change at a later stage. I'm also glad that we didn't pay good money just to be told what we're doing well. And while it's unfortunate that we don't get the balanced picture in the public record at this point, and a number of my colleagues have commented on that this evening, I think that the aim of the report was to address what we're not doing so well. And I think that it does that, it's really, as I said, it's really heartening to hear people reflecting on that, recognising that we can all do better. And so the motion is simply to note the report, refer the recommendations to a workshop for further action. I hope that as a result of that, we will be able to advise our ratepayers of a positive outcome, and indeed, as the mayor suggests, build a better platform over the next six months for an incoming council later in the year, where treating each other with respect is a given, as it always should be. So I do commend the motion to my colleagues.
Thank you. So all those in favour? The motion is carried. And I'll hand the chair to Deputy Mayor while he deals with the next question.
Item 7.4.4 is a renewal of lease for the Hobart Model Aero Club at Kellyfield. Do we have a mover, Alderman James?
Sorry, moved, sorry.
We have a seconder? Oh, sorry, Alderman Mulder, thank you. Alderman James.
Yes, thank you, acting Deputy Mayor.
Deputy Mayor, sorry.
Look, this has been a sort of a flagship for Clarence over the years. It has been one of the key activities that has been actually part of the Clarence Council, even though when we merged with Richmond in 93, I think it was, that this actual activity became across as part of the Clarence City Council. And it has provided to the community a wealth of interest, as well as the actual transfer of the land to, from the Kelly family, to the council, and then obviously to the amalgamated council of Richmond and Clarence back in those, in that time. So, look, this is really part of the process of a new lease. And the new lease is, of course, for public land. And there is a process by which it needs to go through, and there is always an opportunity for others, persons or persons who have some concern about this, to be able to put forward their representation, and for it to be considered by council. There was one objection or representation, not in support, but nevertheless, that was addressed as part of the process. And therefore, we are now at the situation of where council has put forward, or has made the recommendation that notes the one objection, and to the intention to enter a new lease, and resolves to lease the public land, as outlined in attachment one of the report, to Hobart Model Aero Club Incorporated, in accordance with council's usual lease terms, and authorises the general manager to advise the one party who lodged the objection to the proposed lease to exercise, if they so desire, their right of appeal. I see council support.
Thank you, Alderman James. Alderman Mulder.
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. There aren't too many issues with this. There's been a little bit of controversy. I've been contacted a few times, and it often relates to the club as, has been alleged as folding. And I've made some inquiries and discovered that it's got 60 strong active members, and it's probably growing. There was also some concern out there, and I don't know whether this has come from the objector, but there's also some concern out there that this club only caters for mode one flying control. Don't ask me what that means, but that's what it is, when in fact, mode two is the most common used. When I checked that fact out, I discovered that the person I was talking to has been a member of the club for many, many years, and is actually a mode two operator. So some of the issues that the furfies that get out there are to be done. It's not to say that there aren't things that aren't right. But I also understand that if, that under the deed of gift, if council doesn't renew the lease, then we owe this club, we have to compensate this club for the significant amounts of infrastructure that that club has placed on what is actually council land. So I'm not too sure that what the basis of the objection is, but if it's any of those issues, I might like to consider that we might have to think about the basis of that objection. If, as I've also been informed, it's an objection for someone who thinks that we shouldn't renew this lease, and that the land is suitable for some sort of, no doubt, residential development area, I think that that is, that is not a valid basis for an objection, because it was deeded to council for this particular purpose. So I'm quite confident that if those are the grounds of objection, that this will sail through, as it should. And it's not to say that we can't also be examining other areas where this sort of activity could occur, which is one of the issues that's been put to me. But as far as this is concerned, I'll support this motion.
Other speakers? Alderman Blomley.
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. I won't be supporting the motion this evening. Colleagues would be aware that on behalf of the objector, I've raised or asked several questions over the last several months. And to be very clear, the objection is not based on anti-Hobart Model Aero Club at all. And it's certainly not regarding opening up that acreage and significant parcel of land for residential development. I mean, as we all would be aware, those of us that read the agenda papers, that's just not, that's just not possible under the deed that Mr. Kelly, when he gifted Kellyfield to the people of what was in Richmond. So to be very clear, Madam Mayor, the objector's issue is exclusive use that the Hobart Model Aero Club has for the 10-year period. That's what's been proposed here. His view is that the original intention, Mr. Kelly, was for that not insignificant parcel of land to be for shared use. And there's been some discussions with junior sporting organisations as well, who that land might be suitable for them to use. I will, I told my flag on Friday during the agenda briefing, and I've since discussed with the GMs, well, just to put on the record, that there has been some issue with communication from council to the objector. So if you could please just ensure that any communication is added into, is not only email, but also sent to that, to the objector by registered mail, please. email, but also sent to that, to the objector by registered mail, please. The objector sent an email earlier today to council asking a number of questions, those questions to be answered, the information to provide, not only him, but also to Alderman. In essence, it is regarding the estimated days and times that the Model Aero Club will need to utilise the land, but clearly it's not 24/7 operation. And also any funding that the Hobart Model Aero Club has received from Clarence City Council during its time of occupancy. And I know that our legal officers receive that, so I'm sure that in due course, those questions will be asked. I'll just ask for you, Madam Acting Mayor, the general manager, if that information also be provided to elected members in the weekly briefing report.
Thank you, Alderman Blomley. Any other speakers? Right, reply, Alderman James?
See council support.
I'll put the motion, which is a renewal of the lease to the Hobart Model Aero Club for 10 years under the terms as depicted in attachment one. All in favour? Against? Alderman, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Moving on now to item 8.1, notice the motion, Alderman Blomley.
Mr Mayor, I move the motion standing in my name.
Perhaps a second please. Alderman Chong, thank you. Alderman Blomley.
Thank you. Mr Mayor, without doubt, we are at a dangerous point in human history. The ruthless invasion of Ukraine by Russian forces has shocked the world, and I'm sure our collective hearts go out to all those affected. As a modern, free democratic society, many of us have been horrified as we've watched the unfolding terror in Ukraine. There is no doubt that innocent people have been killed in what many describe as unprovoked war being waged by a modern day Hitler. Now, Mr Mayor, some may question the genesis of this motion and why it's been brought before us this evening. I mean, what role or jurisdiction does Clarence City Council have in international diplomacy or foreign affairs? And to be totally upfront, in the past, I've had critical emotions borne into this chamber that seemingly have no direct relationship or relevance to council's role and responsibilities. In fact, my good friend, Hobart City Alderman Martin Zuko, has been very vocal on this point, and ordinarily, I would line up beside him, but not on this occasion. Not on this occasion, Mr Mayor, because I've been moved by the scores of council residents who have been in contact pleading for council to play a role, any role, in supporting the people of Ukraine and the actions of the Tasmanian and Australian governments in providing support to Ukraine and her people. Mr Mayor, Tasmania has a proud history of welcoming and providing support to refugees and supporting national efforts in providing humanitarian responses to those affected by previous conflicts. Many of us would remember the Kosovo Albanian refugees housed in the Brighton Army barracks in 1999. Pleasingly, earlier this month, on the 3rd of March, the Tasmanian Parliament unanimously supported a motion moved by the Honourable Kibar Net MP, which Interalia committed to work with the Australian Government in jointly responding to unfolding events in Ukraine. Mr Mayor, as we know, council has already taken five steps demonstrating our support through lining up the Rosney Barn in the blue and yellow of the Ukrainian National Flag. I also note that Hobart City Council is flying the Ukrainian flag outside their chambers, and maybe this is something we also want to consider. However, whilst symbolic gestures are important, there may be more practical options that we can take, such as collaboration with the state government to assist with refugee resettlement in our city or providing financial assistance to an appropriate charity. Colleagues will note that the motion invites the general manager to invest in our options and provide us with advice on the best way forward. Mr Mayor, there is, of course, other option available to each and every single one of us to send a strong signal that we do not support Putin's war in Ukraine, and that is through our hip pockets, the power of the consumer. Disappointingly, some multinational companies have not followed the trade embargoes and are still trading in Russia. Well-known household name brands who, through their actions, provide tacit support of the Putin regime. As consumers and as a council that also consumes, we have the opportunity to send a clear message, these actions are not okay. And through this conscious decision, we no longer subsidise the barbaric and unprovoked war in Ukraine. Mr Mayor, a key part of our role, as outlined in the Act, is to represent our community and to advocate on their behalf. Our community is keen for us to take action. Now is the time for us to take that action.
Alderman Chong.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As Alderman Blomley started, it's really easy to argue this is not our business. And you're right, in many ways it isn't. It's not part of council's normal functions to do this. If you, you know, distill us down to the roads, rates and rubbish, this is definitely in none of those baskets. But as Alderman Blomley mentioned, our constituents, our ratepayers, are asking us to do something, whatever we can, to help. And they're asking us to support the condemnation of this action in Ukraine. And as representatives of our community and as individuals, surely we need to decry this unwarranted invasion and surely we need to decry the wanton killing of innocent people in Ukraine. I think it's important that this time, we do support this motion, that we do send a message to our community, that we do care about what happens outside our borders. I see council support.
Alderman Warren?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to commend Alderman Blomley on bringing this motion before us, and I will be supporting it. The war on Ukraine is devastating and it's been deeply distressing to witness even from the other side of the world. We are a global community and it's only natural to want to reach out and provide help and support to those whose lives have been shattered. But my point is this, all war is devastating. Why is this war the subject of a motion to council? What about the continuing conflict in the Middle East, where women and girls are prevented from receiving a basic education? What about the atrocities committed in the ongoing conflict in Israel and Palestine? What about the war in Myanmar? What about the refugees that successive Australian governments of both colours have treated so shamefully, some of whom have been locked up in a single hotel room for nine years and whose plight only reached the mainstream media because of an anti-vaxxer tennis player? This is indeed a role for council in helping refugees, and I do commend Deputy Mayor, Hobart Deputy Mayor Helen Burnett, on seeking to help to resettle some of these refugees in Hobart. So my question is, why aren't we moving motions and demanding action on all these atrocities? Or is it the case that some atrocities are more newsworthy than others?
Other speakers? Alderman Mulder?
I thank you, Alderman Warren, for picking up the things that I was going to say. I would add to that some very closer to home ones. What about the victims of West Aryan who have been basically overtaken with a dodgy plebiscite in the early 1960s and consequently we have done nothing for? What about the people of Timor who spent so many years under the yoke and only towards the very end, when they themselves had an uprising, did we do anything? What this motion should call is for all parties in the federal government to restore the temporary protective visas, which, under which the Kosovas came here, I'm not sure, under what arrangements, the Ukrainian refugees are coming here. And they are certainly worthy of our support. But I do make the point, as Alderman Warren has done. If we're going to stand up and start to say these things, if we're going to express things and say things, then we maybe, we need to be doing this every time there is some disaster that befalls in the other parts of the world. Now, we are limited in what we can do. We can make symbolic gestures, and I'm not too sure how we're going to go about setting up housing or doing those sorts of things. I mean, for heaven's sake, we're having trouble housing our own people, let alone others coming in. So unless we're coming suggesting or going to take to the Greater Hobart City Committee some proposal to develop, you know, room for us to do these sorts of things, as was done at Brighton, then maybe we should do something. But of course, we condemn this sort of outrageous aggression. Of course, we express support for those who are displaced, for those who are going to think. But if we really want to, then we need to do it as a more universal approach, not just picking particular sentiment of winners.
Thank you, Alderman Yonkin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, you know, seeing what's going on over there, it's horrifying and certainly I don't think anyone's really in any concept of want to be right to live through that and, you know, our hearts go out there and it's affected. And we're hoping this all ends, you know, sooner rather than later. You know, it's a pretty complex geopolitical issue. It's got a lot more intertwined in it than even we would understand. But I still go back to the couple of points that have been raised by some others, that, yeah, where does all this end? And I agree, I mean, there's that many conflicts going on around the world that we only pick and choose the ones that we want to highlight because they're the most obvious ones or they're involved, you know, a country that we seem to care a bit more about. Like, you know, I have been scared by the fact that we ignore all of the war and the conflict that's going on in other parts of the world. And even some of the things that go on inside our own country at times are being ignored and don't deal with. So I think we should focus on our core business, you know, I've said this plenty of times before, you know, if there is anything that comes before us that allows us to help out anyone in need, that's a resolve of a budget, and we've got the ability to do so, I would welcome the opportunity to have that discussion, but I think we should focus more on the things that we're elected to do and if our own personal beliefs, you know, require us or maybe we're going to go and do other things outside of the council, I encourage everyone to do that, but I think we should just, because where does it end? We'd have to put a motion up every week about some conflict or some human rights issue all around the world. So no, I'd like to support this motion.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Kendy?
Thank you, just very quickly from me, and I appreciate those contributions from colleagues, especially Alderman Mulder and Alderman Warren for looking at the big picture. But I'm pleased with, to see point four there, invites the general manager to provide Alderman with advice on specific actions that council can take to support those adversely affected by the invasion of Ukraine. And I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman James?
Excuse me, thank you, Mr Mayor, and this is an in-depth motion that's being put forward. And of course, it refers to, and I don't want to read it because most of the listeners have actually been provided with it, but look, it really stands out as being a state and federal responsibility. There's no doubt about it. We can say that we condemn it and we do, all of us do. But the simple fact of the matter is the federal and state governments need to really push the issue, and I would have thought that federal government responsibility is really at the centre of this particular act. And whether you agree or disagree, the federal government has been making, sending ammunition and other military equipment to the Ukraine. And that's where it really ought to stay and not be bogged down in a local council which has enough responsibilities and issues. We're leading up to budget shortly and therefore I wouldn't have thought that we would even under part four of this, invites the general manager to provide Alderman with advice on specific actions that council can take to support those adversely affected. Now, that may mean there may be some contribution that this council would make, I don't know, it's still to be determined if this motion is passed. So, look, we have our own core responsibilities to undertake in the city. We've already had a discussion on the state of homelessness in Clarence. Also, we've been trying to get the middle ground on affordable housing and also we need to concentrate on our roads and stormwater. Look, there's just so many issues that we need to address in the city. And other than by our own private and working through some of these charitable organisations, and I would, for the first person, be able to make a contribution through one of those very able charitable organisations and hopefully the money does go to Ukraine. But, look, to really flag this as one of the issues that council needs to address, and it's already been mentioned by Alderman Warren, there are other areas within the, around the world where there are atrocities that are happening. And also, does it mean therefore that whenever we're going to get another motion coming to council, that we may be having to address that in the relation of Middle East? Let's stick to our core responsibilities. If you want to go and make a donation or assist with one of these charitable organisations, then do that by all means. But at this stage, let's concentrate on what's ahead of us. We've got the rates coming up and also we have another number of projects that need to be addressed. And I think at this stage, we should not be addressing this sort of thing when it's the responsibility of the federal government. I will not be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Piers?
Thank you, Mayor. Along the lines of what Alderman James said, but, look, we've got a lot of people in our own country, a lot of people in our own city that cannot afford housing and everything else. I understand we've got something, so many people living at Kangaroo Bay at the moment that are homeless. You know, we try to, our armed forces veterans that cannot get homes here in their own country, their own country they went to defend. You know, there's so many things that we could be doing. But when I see this in Ukraine, I do support what Alderman Blomley's trying to do in this case. You know, when innocent kids are being killed, not just injured but killed, I think it's our responsibility. I haven't had phone calls about this, I've discussed it with a couple of people and they said, similar to what Alderman James, Alderman Warren said, that's not a council issue. But I think in this case, and I hope not to make too many exceptions, we can make an exception for this, and I'll be supporting the motion.
Thank you. No other speakers? Right of reply, Alderman Blomley?
Yeah.
Alderman James?
That's James here, Mr Mayor.
Sorry, I've got Alderman Walker as well now. Everyone's come to life all of a sudden. Alderman Walker, you have the floor.
Thank you for that. What is happening in Ukraine is macabre and incomprehensible. And it's affecting people deeply. I've, I have indeed have had scores of conversations with many people about this. I get the privilege of doing one-to-one with quite a few members of the community as part of my job. That's included people of Ukrainian heritage, and yes, they are hurting particularly. No one has actually, of any of those conversations, said or implored on me as a representative of council to have council actively partaking in the space. And, yeah, look, you know, I hear what other people are saying around the cascading effect, that, you know, every meeting could henceforth be, you know, come up, what's the team Clarence World Police approach on this matter? But this is a big situation and I think it would be callous to not support the motion. Some people are indicated they're going to do that, so I am putting in the bottom drawer a foreshadow motion if this isn't successful, talking about condolences amongst a couple of other things that I will pull off the top of my head very quickly if it doesn't get through because I think that would be problematic. What's the way forward? Well, I, you know, I think there is a role around bipartisanship at the national level. I do back and support the strong measures taken by the Prime Minister and the Australian Government, the tangible support in munitions, in equipment, and even in energy resources. And on that note, one of the things that is also having a big impact that Australia is now part of is the Magnitsky Act. And that basically is a targeted and smart way of imposing sanctions on human rights violators, gets up for the oligarchs and other people as well. And I would... And I would reach out to the hosts within the Labor movement to say how proud you should be of Senator Kimberley Kitchen for getting this up. That would not have happened without the driving of it. And it is a credit to the Australian nation to have had someone do that. What else? Well, look, at the local level, the main things are probably in relation to engaging with the Multicultural Council of Tasmania. They're spearheading, they are far more networking and I'm sure Alderman Toohey would be, not Alderman Toohey, kidding of ourselves. I retract that, Mr Toohey, I apologise. I'm sure that our staff are indeed well linked into some of these things and would be doing things off their own back. The bottom line is the hip pocket and that's, you know, up to us where we can. I've donated through Red Cross, figure out your donation and round it up by 10% because 10% is roughly what the admin charges these days. They have been burnt by some of the way they've done things in Australia in recent times, but they've committed that any unspent funds are going to be reused in other international events. So I think that's the way forward and I guess that's probably more than enough for me.
Alderman Burt, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, Clarence City Council in the past has provided assistance, both in kind and by a financial contribution in response to natural disasters and humanitarian crises of this type. I support Alderman Blomley's motion. And further, I foreshadow bringing a motion to council, hopefully at the next council meeting, for council to develop a natural disaster and humanitarian crisis assistance policy, similar to that which Hobart City Council has in place. That would provide the parameters of when and what and how we go about providing assistance in these types of situations. And if agreed to, if the policy is agreed to, then it would be that we would be looking at a line item in our annual budget to cover these sort of situations. As some other Aldermen have said, we can't cover every situation. But if we had some clear parameters, that will help us in our deliberations and our decision. Thank you.
Thank you. No other speakers. Alderman Blomley, right reply.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I thank colleagues for their contributions this evening and urge them to support the motion. Thank you.
So all those in favour of Alderman Blomley's notice of motion, all those raise hands please. Against, the motion is carried. Thank you. Notice of motion, Alderman Walker.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I wish to move the motion as listed in my name in the agenda.
Do I have a second, please? Second. Alderman Peers, thank you.
Look, thank you for that. One of my mantras is that politics is problem solving. And this motion obviously is, I would say, years in the making, but the catalyst is indeed what we're witnessing in northern New South Wales and southern Queensland. And the floods in this more have been profound. They've had that much in the past, but this is beyond that. And, you know, Brisbane's been hit again. Now, in early 2020, in January 2020, this council, you know, this motion was put on the table that we provide $20,000 of rate payers' money to the bushfire relief. And that is a strategy that this council voted in favour of adopting and that occurred. That was a strategy that was sent us the right way then, I guess, around the table. I haven't even had confirmation that that money has been spent yet because I know that there are, it was only reported today that there is still unspent money from some of that bushfire funds. And I get a little bit wary of doling out rate payer money for a couple of reasons. One of them is that it can crowd out community initiatives. And we saw a lot of that with, in response to bushfire relief. The nearest takeaway to me in my suburb was donating the proceeds from every bacon and muffin and coffee that they sold for a whole month. And that was just one of several. There's a lot of community initiatives that go in that space. And you have to ask yourself, what's the best thing and how can councils pay off? And the bottom line is that, given the amount of damage, given all the challenges put on local governments in that area, money that's pledged won't necessarily immediately make a difference. It's in fact, it'll be skills that they will need. And this motion is committing us to basically try an initiative where we get some processes in place with the Local Government Association of Tasmania and the other local government associations across Australia. A mechanism, basically, if things are asked, that they can be forwarded on in a judicious way without each council ringing each other's council to see if they can do something. And it may be the case that we can spare something in the area it's asked for, or it might not be. And if we do that, then we'll be effectively, it's a cost in kind. But think about it this way, not only are you helping fellow Australians in a tough time, helping their communities come back sooner. Any staff members involved in that process that wanted to go and were able to be spared are going to be getting refreshed, are going to get on-the-ground training, if you like, in these processes as they happen. And we're bringing those skills back to us. So if you like, I look at this as smart help. And I think this is the best way forward, as I say, because we're basically just trying to set up a system where local government associations can talk to each other to sort of put the requests across their members and get things to happen. Things do happen. There is some coordination around the emergency services aspect, policing, firing, et cetera. But in my whole 10 years on council, no general manager or anyone else has said we've had a request from this council in Victoria or somewhere else for this. It hasn't happened. We've had a little bit of chatter around with other councils in the state, but none of the interstate stuff. And so I look at it as a smart way to help fellow Australians, but also do it in a way that is upskilling our staff and making us more prepared for any event that could befall certain Tasmanian or elsewhere in the state. I seek your support for this.
Thank you. Alderman Peers.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and I congratulate Alderman Walker on bringing this motion to council. I think he's outlined it extremely well. I mean, I think we've got an issue with stormwater here, but, jeez, I've never seen anything like that where it's just suburban city underwater. And I mean, I think any help that we can in this area would, you know, I think we should be doing it. And as point two does say, report back to council on any requests received. As Alderman Walker said, it may never happen, but at least here we're offering support, offering support from fellow states in this great country.
Other speakers. Alderman Kennedy, I think you've got the geek. And then Alderman Mora.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm just picking up on a couple of points there and yes, I will be supporting this motion. But I love the word smart help. And I think the more that we can learn about the potential of these situations, whether it be related directly to climate change or some of the issues that we may as a council have to look at ourselves in the future with, you know, we all know about water table rising in many areas, inundation issues, how we even look at perhaps the planning scheme as to future-proofing, I suppose, not only our rate payers, but the rate payers of the future that may well have to pay for some of the costs if we don't get it right now. So I'm all for smart help, great, and also the fact that we may be able to learn something from another area to try and keep our rate payers safe and their homeless, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mora.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Who can but not support the sentiment that when someone in our country is in trouble, that they need help? But I won't be supporting this particular motion for a number of reasons. In my former life, I was Tasmania Police's Counter-Terrorism Commander and served on the State Emergency Management Committee, which is a subset of the National Emergency Management Committee that deals with nationwide and even international responses to emergencies. All hazards emergencies, not just natural hazard emergencies. So this is the mechanisms that we saw during the COVID. International, national, state and local government responses to a national emergency. These arrangements are in place, they exist and they are regularly called on. In fact, by implication, there is a standing offer of assistance for anyone who asks it. So, you know, there are national arrangements. The defence force to the civil power, which we see operating and which has caused so much political controversy, is only triggered when it's asked for. It is not offered in advance because of constitutional arrangements. When we have a major fire service, you actually see this goes to, not only do interstate fire services offer assistance, you get international help from countries like the United States, where California's fire season is contrary to ours. Although climate change, by the way, is making those sorts of offers not available because their fire seasons are now starting to overlap. So if you want to really do something about national emergencies, start thinking about some climate change action. And the first part, in an emergency, the last thing that a local government or emergency responses, when they're up to their armpits in water or fire or any other national emergency, is need to be flooded with every single council in Tasmania offering staff support. If they need it, they will ask for it. Their own local management arrangements will do it. So I really just wonder why we are going through this particular exercise. The State Emergency Management Committee. We council have our own emergency management committee. ElGAP contributes to the State Emergency Management Committee. So it's really, you know, as I said, I support the sentiment, but these arrangements have existed, they're well practised, and if staff are required, they'll be requested. And I am sure this council would be the first people to go and offer it. And it doesn't need to be debated in a political environment. If you're going to give, if your neighbour asks for a hand, you don't come in and have a big debate about it, you give it. So I really don't wonder, I just wonder why this motion needs to come before us. Had we had a motion that said that council expresses its support for the people affected by the floods in New South Wales and has a standing offer of assistance if required, that would be sufficient. But to go through this whole process and try to duplicate arrangements with a separate motion is not something I can support.
Thank you, Alderman Mora. Other speakers. Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It is interesting that this motion does refer, amongst other things, to, and I quote, provide staff support to councils in Queensland and New South Wales as they move into the recovery phase following that recent flood disaster in both states, unquote. Now, this is, in my view, this is the key aspect of this particular motion. It's sending our staff, together with the other local government association council representatives, to councils in Queensland and New South Wales. Why do we need to do that? We have heard about the federal government, the Liberal National Coalition, have been criticised for their tardy sort of move in relation to the recovery in the recent flood. They've been criticised and it's only of late that they have decided to obviously enact a particular scheme to address this particular matter. In Clarence, we have huge problems. And it's been addressed in the recent note, rate notice circular that was sent out. We have stormwater issues and we have huge problems in relation to that. Not only that, we have inundation issues. And I don't want to pass any sort of indirect comment that might upset people in Seven Mile Beach or Lordoale. But look, in the next 50 years or even so on, there are going to be huge problems down there unless council does something about it. And we need to look after our own patch first. That's where we need to start. Now, we can, as was mentioned by my colleague, we can, you know, say we would, we endorse the concerns and so on and so forth in relation to the situation in Queensland and New South Wales regarding the recent flood. But that's all we should be doing. We should not be sending our staff. It's going to be a cost that we have to carry. And whilst those staff who are trained in the particular areas of what, natural disasters and flood and inundation, are out of the country, we have to deal with what I believe is pressing matters and they are really, really current and before us in this particular time and change. It's climate change all over and over again and we in this place have not enacted a climate change disaster code. We tried. Alderman Warren tried to and I seconded the motion and we didn't have the numbers. And we haven't actually endorsed it in Clarence. Now we are saying, let's send our staff who have this expertise in flood and also disaster expertise to New South Wales and Queensland, when in fact, we haven't even looked after our own patch and we have immense problems in relation to that. I will not be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Alderman Chong? Alderman Brennan? Alderman Blomley? And then Alderman Chong. Thank you.
That masks, Mr Mayor, you're sort of taking it off. You're obviously misspaking a lot.
It doesn't go. Alderman Blomley? Uh, you are muted, Alderman Blomley? Uh, we just hold it for a moment. We said we have a technical problem.
Can you hear us? Yeah, he can hear us.
Uh, I'll come back. We'll solve that. We'll give Alderman Chong the chair.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Sorry about that, Alderman Blomley. I guess I just wanted to say, there's been a lot of talk about sending emergency management staff in this. This motion doesn't actually talk about that. It talks about staff support. And if I was a council in New South Wales or Queensland that had been flooded, I would want payroll staff, I'd want planning staff, I'd want health officers. I'd want the people that we use on the ground all the time. Because yes, absolutely, there are national coordinated responses for emergency management staff, but they probably don't go down to Kyneland's human resources person for three weeks because ours has just lost their home and doesn't necessarily have anywhere to live. So I think it's important that we do this because it's not just that emergency stuff. It's the day-to-day running of council that we can help support.
Thank you. Have we got them online yet? Alderman Evans, and then we will come back to you, Alderman Blomley.
Thank you. Yeah, I enjoyed the debate tonight about, you know, how we can best provide support to people who are in real strife. And it was only this morning, actually, I was on the Zoom hookup for the Australian Coastal Councils Association and the chair of that organisation, Sharon Cadwell, she's now the mayor of Ballinashire. And she just gave us a little bit of an update on how things are actually going up there and it's pretty grim, really. They're definitely already talking in years, not weeks, not months, about the cost and devastation of the floods. We've got a COVID problem now because, you know, one example she gave is 27 people and six dogs living in one home because it's all that's anywhere near where any of them are. And I think that what your point, Deputy Mayor, is a really, really good one about. And I think that what your point, Deputy Mayor, is a really, really good one about, and I hadn't even considered it, is if, yeah, if someone's laid out by COVID in a month or two months, or this is what we're talking about, recovery phase in the motion, yeah, how good would it be if there was something on the shelf that you could grab from hopefully where this is taking us? And also, you know, because they're looking for different types of expertise. And also what Alderman Von Berto foreshadowed, I think there's really quite a good way to probably meld tonight and what's coming into something that can be really constructive. And I know we touched on this earlier about how COVID makes that difficult in terms of collaborating, but I would really urge at least Alderman Von Berto and Alderman Walker to chat in the lead-up and, you know, I'm more than happy to be part of that and I'm sure others would as well, to make sure we get something really rock solid on that front before we even have to get to a agenda brief. But, you know, I think that we can play a role through the way that this is going in terms of strategic assistance to backfill gaps that these councils are going to have and they have absolutely copped it. But there's also lessons for us in what's happened there and I'm sure if we were suffering the same circumstances, we'd appreciate offers of help that would come to us. The only thing I would say is I do agree with some of the sentiment about the fact that we're talking about staffing issues here already around, I mean, as two meetings ago, I asked the questions about our field crews and we admitted that we're struggling there. As recently as last year, we had to hire extra staff outside of budgeted discussions because of the pressure that our people are under. And that's why I take some comfort in Elgat there and I think it should probably be something that goes to Algo because it should be looked at in a way that we're not going to be victims of our own goodwill in terms of outrunning our own operations. Because I also know that people who have been flooded in Clarence aren't going to appreciate seeing five people on TV climbing onto a plane, albeit, yeah, maybe not to do a clean-up but to work on policy or engineering or who knows what. But, yeah, so I think we've got to balance all that, but I think we can, both in tonight's debate and what appears to be coming to us in three weeks. So I certainly support this, I look forward to seeing where things go in three weeks' time about how we can be really practical about our support, but hopefully get the best outcome, which isn't always a trolley full of cash that doesn't reach people who really need help.
Thank you. Have we got Alderman Blomley online?
No, can you hear me, Mr Mayor?
Yeah, I've got you out in clear, Alderman Blomley.
Wonderful, thank you. Well, I'll be brief, Mr Mayor, this is an excellent motion, it's a very practical approach and, you know, it's simple, it is a win-win for both the communities but also for our staff as well, as is contained within the explanatory notes here. Our staff have the opportunity to experience these natural disasters to upskill, so they've been prepared to service the needs of our community, not only if, but when natural disasters occur here closer to home. You know, 2016 is not that long ago, I remember being up north in the state when the floods occurred and of course you have the fires as well. And someone touched on these types of natural disasters, seem to be happening more often these days. And I think it's incumbent upon us to ensure that our staff are not only doing the right thing morally by lending support to our neighbour, but have also the opportunity to be well-skilled so they're in a position to provide their support when they're called upon here at home. So it's a superb initiative by Alderman Walker, I congratulate him on that and I'm delighted to support the motion, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Ewan.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I mean, this sort of sits in the same category as the previous motion we've had tonight. And I think Alderman Blomley highlighted that, you know, there are systems and processes in place for us to share our expertise and help and staff and whatever was required to make this happen. And I acknowledge that, you know, once again, that, you know, some people have had through some pretty tough times and their lives have been lost and there's been some around the scenes. I think we should just leave this to the authorities that have already got these processes managed and, you know, we can certainly, once again, show our support and care by donating to causes and doing our bit to help everyone else. But I think, once again, it should be something that we lead to the experts to focus on and make it back to the things that we're supposed to be concentrating on. So I like supporting this motion.
Thank you. Alderman Von Berto.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I will be supporting this motion and it's important to note, for me, there are words within the motion that provide parameters. So in part one, it says, as appropriate, provide staff support and part two notes that there will be a report back to council on any requests received. I think that's a very important aspect because as was picked up by Alderman Edmonds, we ourselves have staff shortages and we have staff shortages across many programming areas in council for one reason or another. So any request that is appropriate needs to come before us to balance, to look at what we can provide if anything. So we need to balance our requirements as to our support of others. It's good to hear that Alderman Edmonds believes there is some merit in looking at a policy in relation to natural disasters and humanitarian crises and that would provide some parameters about in-kind and also financial contributions. So I look forward to working with other Aldermen and bringing that to council. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alderman Walker?
I'll reply. Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thanks to everybody for their contributions. They haven't all been an echo chamber saying, yay, James, there's been plenty of issues that people wanted to raise. This is how we work, this is how we are most of the time. Different perspectives, not going to come to unanimous agreement, but as we have the ability to debate, we get to hear other perspectives and they can inform where we get to. And I acknowledge Alderman Mole's experience area of emergency management and that sort of national and international coordination certainly is an important thing. I've just noted there weren't any local government examples that were mentioned in that speech and again, that I can't think of some in our time, other than a little bit of around the region when the bushfires occurred around Dunalee. Look, the key, one of the key bits in the message there is recovery phase, it's not, oh, there's a bushfire, it's like 20 people up there, it's recovery, that's often the hard act, that's the long road and that is where we potentially might have a role to play. And again, I thank Alderman Von Berto for pointing out the guardrails, I have put guardrails in this. We're not going to be in a situation where we're told, sorry, can't have a planning application for the next two weeks because the whole unit's up there. We may not be able to provide support in areas where they most need them, but as Alderman Chong noted, it could be payroll, it could be community development and this is, I see it as the best continuing professional development staff can have. And I believe in continuing professional development, I believe in it as a health professional, I believe in it as an elected representative. And as I said, the most tangible way forward, I think, is this. What I'm hoping to see out of this is some templates, some things that I'm on the floor and have in the future. The floods are a catalyst, the thinking around this local government association sort of network thing happening. And I'm trying to think that, yes, there's this issue, but how we move things in the future. So hopefully what Alderman Von Berto brings to it for, we'll dovetail in with this and we'll see where we get to. But this is what I believe, as I said, is smart support, it's practical and we get back in many ways as staff get upskilled. And I think it might provide increased job satisfaction as well. So it's not going to be, it's not going to be a 12-hour wait and that's fine. I thank everybody for their contributions and if you're waiting, still seek your support.
Thank you. So the motion for the chair is as put forward on the agenda by Alderman Walker, all those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. Motion 8.3, Alderman Warren.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Before we start, can I seek council's leave to replace the motion in the agenda with an alternative, slightly amended one that has been circulated to colleagues?
Thank you, Alderman Warren. Look, I'm sure we can accept it has been circulated, has everyone got a copy of the alternative amended motion that Alderman Warren's put forward?
Given that we can't display it on the screen at the same time as we would normally in a council meeting, may I just read it before we go any further? The original motion, part A seeks to move the acknowledgement of country to be the first item on the agenda of council meetings. To that I've added, as recommended by the Reconciliation Action Plan Working Group, and authorises the general manager to amend the meeting procedures accordingly. Part B, which was to replace the council prayer with a minute of reflection, I've replaced with that council consider at a workshop, replacing the council prayer with a minute of quiet reflection immediately following the acknowledgement of country. So it's a slight tweaking of the motion that appears in the agenda. So I'll leave you to seek a second up for that.
Do we have a second up please? So Alderman Kendi, thank you.
Okay, and now my time starts now.
Thank you.
So I rise today to speak to a motion regarding the placement of the acknowledgement of country on the council agenda. This motion comes from the Reconciliation Action Plan Working Group, which Alderman Kennedy and I are a part of. We recognise that there's much work to be done in this area to establish trust and a working partnership with First Nations people in Clarence and we don't expect this to happen quickly because we want to make sure we get it right. But moving the acknowledgement of country is something simple that we can do right now in line with standard practice. The acknowledgement of country or welcome of country, if you have an indigenous person available, is in almost all cases given at the beginning of a meeting, speech or event. The Tasmanian state government begins with an acknowledgement of country, as does the Federal House of Representatives. I looked at a few of the other Tasmanian councils to see what they do. Those that do an acknowledgement first up include Hobart, Glenorkie, Kingborough, Brighton, Launceston, Tasman, Hewan Valley, Glamorgan Spring Bay, Northern Midlands, Debenhamsport, Burnie, West Coast, Flinders Island, Break of Day, Central Coast. I stopped when I got to more than half of the councils, much as it was interesting to listen to the different acknowledgements used. If you're going to genuinely pay your respects to First Nations peoples, it seems more respectful to do it first. Currently, we start with the council prayer. I'd like to thank Thomas Chick, who's in our public gallery today, for doing all the work for me on this one with his extremely articulate and well-supported arguments. Who doesn't love good data and a few graphs? I know that this part of the motion has raised concerns for some of my colleagues and I didn't want to distract us from the more important discussion about the acknowledgement of country, so I responded to my colleague's request to refer this to a workshop. But I do just want to share my reasoning. By replacing the prayer with a minute's silence, and yes, that can seem like a very long time, we allow everyone to reflect in the manner that gives them the most comfort and support. This may be by silently reciting the prayer, the council prayer, or for those from other non-Christian faiths or cultures to reflect on their role of council in a way that is meaningful to them. It does not exclude anyone and it broadens our engagement to those whose beliefs are not currently represented. I seek colleagues' support.
Alderman Kendi.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I don't think there's much more I need, I should need to say on this. I thank Alderman Warren for listening to colleagues at the briefing on Friday and making those changes to part B and also adding the fact that this has been a recommendation from our RAP Working Group. And as mentioned, as a deputy chair of this group, this is actually the first action that the group has recommended to come to council. I hope you can all support the intention of this motion and I thank the mover and of course, the council's RAP Working Group for this. I'd also like to thank Thomas Chick for his deputation tonight and I really seek council's support on this one. Thank you.
Other speakers? Lauren James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I may be regarded as an old fuddy-duddy and basically have been here far too long. And I think that may be acknowledged by a number of members in the community, but nevertheless, there is a key aspect of this that really, I feel, is going to be lost in this whole question of meeting procedure and the council's meeting procedures. Over the years, we've always had, and if we just turn to the front of the agenda, we will note that the mayor will open the meeting with the council prayer and make the following declaration, I acknowledge, et cetera. Then there will be advising the meeting of public, et cetera, et cetera, what is going to be in closed meeting, et cetera. That has what it's been for a number of years and that's what I believe is appropriate for us to continue with. The fact, there's a couple of issues here that I really want to get across. Firstly, I haven't seen the results of the Reconciliation Action Plan Working Group. I know that there may have been circulated some of that or mentioned during the meeting at the briefing on Friday, but nevertheless, I haven't seen what those recommendations are. And I would have thought that if we are dealing with a recommendation from the Reconciliation Action Plan or from RAP Working Group, then we need to be able to make sure we understand what's been discussed and what the recommendations are. I haven't and I apologise if they have been circulated and I haven't been able to read them before tonight's meeting. The other matter that I would like to raise is that the general manager's comments on page 111, I quote in relation to this matter. If supported, it will be necessary to amend council's meeting procedures. The meeting procedures are due for review in April, so any proposed change can be included at that time, unquote. Now, we have a system in this place and if the motion is passed in relation to part A, that includes not only the fact that we are taking on board the recommendations, which I haven't seen, of the RAP Working Group, but also authorises the general manager to amend the meeting procedures accordingly. Now, I think that is putting the cart before the horse. We would discuss this at April and presumably at a workshop to discuss as to whether or not there ought to be some changes to the procedure in relation to the prayer, obviously, which is part of B to be considered as part of the matter of the workshop, and be replaced with a quiet reflection immediately following the acknowledgement of country. That part B, of course, is still to be determined at a workshop and that by the very nature would have to be determined at that time. Nevertheless, we are making a change on the run here, it's policy on the run and I for one will not support that because for one particular reason. I listened very carefully tonight when the mayor read the prayer. It's all encompassing, it doesn't talk about any particular religious organisation, it was very, very clear in what we as a group believe that we should be doing and that's all part of this discussion we had earlier this evening on that election, on that survey which we discussed at Adnauzium. So look, I will not support this. I think we have procedures, we have means by which, and the prayer by being the first part of the meeting, doesn't talk about any religious aspect or in particular religious denomination, but it talks about us being okay, respectful, being clear and working in the interests of the community and that is part of that prayer. So we don't want to change that, I believe. We ought to leave it as it is and therefore, even though I know the intention is to change it and therefore we want to change the meeting procedure, I think it's inopportune, it's not at the appropriate time that we should be doing it and we should be considering this, if there is a change at a workshop, and not making policy. be considering this, if there is a change at a workshop, and not making policy on the run.
I hand over to Deputy Mayor, and I feel as how I'd like to make some personal contributions as an Alderman to this debate. And I'm in very close sympathy with Alderman James on this. And for a few things that I'd just like to touch on. Firstly, the usual way of doing business in this council, from committees into a workshop, talk about it, and we socialise an idea with the whole council before we bring it here. We didn't do that with the flag debate. I don't sense that this is going to be nearly as confrontational as the flag debate as we had, because I sense that there's enough support around the table to ensure that this will get through, and there won't be the opportunity for social media and other groups to misinterpret council's intention and thoughts, true thoughts on this because of a decision. The flag debate, we found that by coming to a workshop, doing some research, discussing it, we came up with a much better motion. We improved it considerably. We actually learned from it. We developed a consensus, and this council was much stronger for being able to work through the issue and get used to the idea and work it together. That was a no-brainer which went wrong. This is another no-brainer, which I know can be improved on where it is at the moment. A couple of things where I think it could be improved. For example, if we want to talk about the welcome, well, we can't talk about a welcome to country because we don't have anyone here to do that. But we do have, we are, as we did tonight, able to acknowledge country. And I think that in acknowledging country, there are different ways to go about it. And one of the things I did as a result of this motion, I noticed the motion, is go to the Reconciliation Australia website, and there are another couple of examples there. And I think that the acknowledgement of country that we've enshrined by council policy can be improved considerably. And sure, you might say, oh, well, we can talk about that at the workshop, then we talk about meeting procedures. But it's part of the motion of what we're trying to talk about now. Why can't we work through it in a workshop, look at it, put our collective minds to it, and actually improve what's being suggested on the table? I mean, it's really quite easy to do that. And we've been doing this for so many years now. What's three more weeks? Another council meeting to actually spend a bit of time to get it right before we make a decision? The next point, and Alderman James touched on this, and it's a fallacy, it's not a Christian prayer. It is not a Christian prayer. It is a prayer that can be easily signed up to by Christians, sure, Jews, Muslims, even Hindus and others acknowledge a supreme God. They don't use the word God in those languages, but in their own language, that's what they're referring to. The prayer is a generic prayer, not a Christian prayer, and I think it's wrong to labour it a Christian prayer. We deliberately designed the prayer so it wasn't purely a Christian prayer. So there are a couple of key points. The other point I want to make is, and I'm very much in favour, and I really support the idea of doing what we can to make ourselves more inclusive to the Aboriginal community. They are a disadvantaged group. They deserve our encouragement and support so that we are more inclusive and they feel more included. But I don't believe it's appropriate to do it by excluding nearly fifty percent of the population of people who acknowledge themselves as Christians. Why is it a zero-sum game? So we go to all this trouble for about ten percent of the population, but decide in doing so, we have to exclude about fifty percent of the population. I just don't understand why we can be trying so hard to be inclusive on one hand, and we decide we'll be exclusive on another. They are the points I wanted to make. I do it personally, from the heart. They are the way I feel about it. And now I'll take the chair back and become a mayor again.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Always going to steal some of Alderman Warren's thunder, but I can't help myself. What's the rush? The rush is that a fair few of us are going to rock up to a reconciliation breakfast. We've been rapping for two years now, and the first recommendation that comes out of this committee, we are, we are going to what, send it off to a workshop for further consideration and refinement? Sorry. Why wasn't this commentary made about the two previous recommendations? They weren't. They were certainly capable of refinement. They were certainly capable of alternative things. We didn't send them to workshops. The urgency with this one is that it would not be a good look for this council to be sitting down there at a reconciliation breakfast and be one of the few councils that doesn't do it this way. In terms of why would we exclude fifty percent of the population? Well, according to the census data, about fifty percent of the population are probably atheist. Any prayer to any god or supreme being is an anathema to atheists. So they're not being included. Why are we excluding them? Acknowledgement to country doesn't exclude anyone. Welcome to country, given by the right person, doesn't exclude anyone. And yep, there's a few processes we could tweak. I for one would like to see, as we did in Parliament, that there's an acknowledgement to country, but we go out of our way to actually do a welcome to country in significant weeks like NADOC or reconciliation week. So we could, there are some tweakings that can be done, and nothing's ever perfect, and those tweaks can happen later. But the imperative really here is to get something on the table, to join the federal parliament, to join the state parliament, and to join the bulk of our fellow councils in being united, in having, you know, this reconciliation week. We can do the tweaking down the track, and that always happens in any event. But, you know, I think that here we have, we have a committee, it's come up with a consensus, it's first issue, and I don't see that there should be too much to it. As for the, yes, I like the idea of some quiet moment of reflection. I'm not too sure a minute is the way to go, and that's a good tweak we'll make at the workshop, I'm sure. But I'm reminded that when we were doing this, a Christian prayer, the Lord's Prayer in the House of, in the Legislative Council, and there was a hotly debated issue. And one of the, so I said to the minister, I said, well, how do you feel about the council prayer? Because like around here, the council prayer and the Lord's Prayer, a lot of members, as we do here, would simply stand there, eyes open, hands clutched, some respect and bow their heads, others don't do it. So I said, how do you feel about this? And he replied, he said, well, I actually am concerned. Because here we are, all mumbling the holy words. And I've got a fair idea, most of them don't even believe in God. So it's actually offensive to me as a Christian to hear people mumbling the Lord's Prayer when they're not Christians or don't believe a single word of it. So, you know, there's something to be said about any sort of prayer to any super being, any deity, that I am just a little bit uncomfortable with in the environment. And if we go to an acknowledgement of country, that would be, I think, in the terms that we do at the moment, but that would be a really good manoeuvre so that we would introduce this thing in recognition of those First Nations people. So the, yeah, the history of this thing is that there was a Christian prayer for a very, very long time, as you know, Mr Mayor. We actually had the ministers fraternal. Now, that gives you a clue about sexism in Ausas South Hapie, right? A ministers fraternal would, on a rotational basis, come and deliver a Christian prayer, and worse still, make a political speech at the same time as alluding to their thing. And then Father Timothy, in the end, was the only one that came here. And it was only when Father Timothy, Father Peter, sorry, retired, that we then had to adopt the council prayer because we didn't have a Christian minister to come and deliver the prayer. So although the prayer itself may be a little bit non-denominational, non-faith, its genesis and its history is quite clearly that of a Christian prayer and that of a Christian homily. So, and it was a very good move. If we're going to have a prayer at all, yeah, by all means, you know, just try to, you know, deface it. And that almost makes it a little bit meaningless. But I do think that replacing it, joining our other colleagues, joining our other bodies, is the way to go with this one. And I would recommend this, and I look forward to some tweaks down the track.
Other speakers? Alderman Yarington?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Firstly, I'd say, look, I like the fact that we do acknowledge Aboriginal people at major events. You know, something that's only been happening in the last few years, and I, you know, and I appreciate that. I think it's good for all of us to have that clearer. It reminds us that, you know, we share this land with some people that have been around a bit longer than some of us. But at the same time, I think that the whole thing has been diluted to a certain extent by some of those things that obviously go with the times. I mean, when you sit in on Zoom calls and you've got people doing it two or three times in a meeting, it makes you wonder whether the whole issue of how we do this best, not just related to what we do at council, but as a society, I would certainly welcome some clarification and some, you know, some real debate about what is the right way to do it. Because, I mean, it doesn't seem to have done a lot of good in terms of, you know, some of these symbolic gestures. I personally think give very little help, we're disadvantaged in some of the things that we know continue out there in the Aboriginal communities, certainly in some of the more remote ones. And, you know, I'd really like to be looking at things that we can do to help in that situation. But trying to, but the real issue here is that, I mean, those are the men quite well explain. I mean, you know, this is policy setting on the run. It should have been done as a workshop, you know, just because we've got a committee looking at this doesn't mean it needs to be put straight in all meetings, straight to debate. You know, I think, you know, and it's not the first time this has happened on these sort of sensitive issues. And I appreciate it. I think, you know, it doesn't help us as a council to come up with the right decision. And I'm not going to support that sort of approach to things regardless of what the issue is. You know, I mean, when you hear comments, you know, from Alderman Warren says, you know, I mean, that's not a good look if we don't do this. Well, I mean, that's not how you set public policy on these sort of sensitive issues. You don't need to be forced into doing things. I mean, I want to do it for the right reasons. I want to, and as the mayor said, to really look at how we can do it better. And I mean, something that's a bit more meaningful. I mean, it's, you know, that's us all certainly going to tell us on a weekly. I'd certainly welcome the opportunity to meet with other Aboriginal communities, who I don't think, because I don't hear them saying they want more of this sort of stuff or that they really value it. I don't think it really, you know, it's a tricky one. I get all of that. But look, no, but I'm not going to support this motion because of the fact that I don't agree with the way that it's being done. I certainly welcome the opportunity to debate this inside a workshop. And I think I'd love to be in that position, be able to do it a little bit better, too, and to get some more clarity around how we do it in council as a whole, just in our meetings. And I mean, as for the prayer, I mean, look, you know, I'm certainly not religious myself, but I mean, I appreciate that, you know, religion is important to a lot of people, and some of the religious doctrines and principles and values have been a big part of certainly in Australian culture and Australian society from a Christian perspective. And, you know, there's many other religions that have contributed to that fabric of life and the things that we hold dear to ourselves. And I think, you know, to get, put one ahead of the other, and, you know, I don't agree with that either. I'm certainly happy to debate on this in a wider format. But, you know, once again, you know, having these things sort of pushed on us like this without having an opportunity to discuss it as a group, you know, I mean, I think that's a far better approach to do maybe towards. So as I just said, you know, no, I won't be supporting either aspect of this motion.
Any other speakers? Alderman Evans?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I take your comments about motions. I understand what you're saying about that. And, you know, I know previously with yourself, I've had things I wanted to talk about as a motion, and brought you and the GM into that conversation pretty early. Some we've hosed down, some we've edited significantly, others we've waved through straight as. But, like, sometimes you can and sometimes you can't, I suppose. And certainly, we, you know, we've made this point about other motions when different people have disagreed. At the end of the day, we abort things and we make a decision based on what's in the agenda paper. Tonight, we've got the chair, you're the chair of the, the chair of the working group of the reconciliation action plan, the group which we wholeheartedly supported setting up, I believe, after the issues that you raised earlier around how we handled some issues with our fourth flagpole. And the first action, and it's not a big one, from the group which we endorsed, is to do this. So I am more than comfortable supporting it. I just also reflect, and, you know, I know everyone can be a hypocrite on this stuff, a bit like planning issues, but how many times we get beat around the head about plans, committees, strategies that we all agreed to from, before even when we even got on council, when we get ones from 2015 brought up and have a gun held to our head about it? I mean, and to then pivot away from this one, when indeed earlier tonight, we're talking about a culture report of people, and I don't know if it was Point G, K, or Y, essentially not sticking to the plan. I, I'm really struggling to reconcile that based on the history of this iteration of council. I mean, we've had a call there for clarification of what people really want. We're literally being told what they want. So certainly for me, no problem. I scratch my head a bit about the way we have to debate these things. But it's, it is what it is. As for, so, yeah, not to finish that topic with a throwaway line like that, but it certainly has my support because it's what's come through the committee that I supported establishing. And it's not, we're not talking about a radical change here. We're talking about the first step on a long, long, long journey. Point B, I understand why people might feel like, why do we have to do A and B together tonight? I also would probably say, what would people say if an Alderman brought Point A to this meeting, and then next three weeks' time had Point B? There'd be, like, there'd be criticism of that as well. And I really think it's worth acknowledging that Alderman Warren has tweaked Point B to the point where it's really just about having that conversation around how we acknowledge faith and the prayer, as part of what we're going to do in April anyway. People's faith absolutely deserves respect. Religion and people's relationship to it is a long and winding road, and our faith can be different things at different times. And indeed, the people we deal with who have faith is different, too. But, you know, like, I would say that I support Point B as well, with the thing that, with the caveat that, you know, we've got to ensure what we do actually does consider how everyone feels along that, right? And I wouldn't, I don't think it's, actually, I know it's not the intention of the mover, and I don't think it's the intention of anyone who supports to be rubbish in religion indeed. I think it's, I think we should work towards making sure it's respected.
Thank you. Alderman Peers?
Before I speak to this motion, Mayor, I've got the reflect reconciliation action plan from the unit council, so this week I'll have time to read it. I'm going to support the motion, Mayor, but even I'm a bit confused here. Welcome to country first, or acknowledgement of the Tasmanian Aboriginal community first, I understand that. But the way it's sounding is the prayer's going completely, the way you were talking, and I didn't think that was the intention at all. And if that's, if it's not going...
It's quite clear that we're going to workshop the prayer, whether we keep the prayer or not, but that's...
Yeah, but the way everyone's talking, I thought, well, you know, I can't quite understand why everyone's not supporting this. Because I think, fine, you know, let's do that, then go to a workshop and discuss it further. But I see room for both. So I'm really not quite sure why we're arguing so much about it, because I think it's quite logical that where we're going. I'll support the motion.
Thanks, Alderman Peers. Alderman Chalmers?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I must admit, I've been puzzled a little by the discussions tonight about policy on the run. I mean, this is a notice on motion. We all have the right to bring a notice of motion. We get them, we read them, we think about them, we talk about them at the briefing. No, we haven't workshopped it. But it was hardly something that came out of the blue tonight. And the suggestion that we don't believe the chair and the deputy chair of our reconciliation action plan working group because we haven't seen the minutes, for goodness sake. If these people, if Alderman Warren and Alderman Kennedy are saying this is the first recommendation out of this group, we need to take it seriously. We need to respond to it. We need to deal with it as soon as we can. It's fortunate timing. We will be reviewing the meeting procedures anyway. So it's an absolutely perfect time to bring this to us for consideration. The bit with the prayer, I think conflated things to start off with, and I do thank Alderman Warren for changing the motion so that we take that to a workshop. As Alderman Edmund says, you know, faith is very personal. As Alderman Edmund says, you know, faith is very personal for, for many people. And whether we end up with a prayer, whether we end up with a statement of purpose, whether we end up with a minute's reflection, whatever it is, that's something collectively we need to discuss and come, come to a decision on before we implement. So I think now this amended motion is really sensible and practical and I hope we all support it.
Other speakers? Alderman Blomley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I note that the, the decision of the 19th vote of last year constituted the working group of council with Alderman Warren, Alderman Kennedy, noting it's not a special committee of council but rather a working group of council. It doesn't have a constitution as such. I'd like to ask through you, Mr. Mayor, some questions. And Mr. Tui, if I may. And the first one is, how many meetings have the, has the working group held since its, since its constitution over, what, 11 months ago?
I think Mr. Tui's on leave, but General Manager, can you help us there?
Thank you. I'll, if you can just bear with me for a moment, I'll, I'll just check email. I think I may have had some information about that.
We'll stop the clock.
I think, I think it's in the order of four meetings that have been held.
Perhaps the chair could-
No, I think it's around four, but I wouldn't-
Okay, so probably around four, Alderman Blomley. We've, we've lost you again. If you bear with us, we'll get you back.
Alderman Blomley's internet.
I can confirm that it was four meetings, Alderman Blomley.
No, why? No, we haven't got you.
Keep talking.
Brendan.
It doesn't look like it on the screen.
If you look at the screen, it doesn't, others have got a mute button, but he hasn't, so there's a technical problem.
I've had confirmation that it's a problem in this room, hearing Alderman Blomley, not, not on Zoom.
Okay, can we get him on, can we get him on the phone? Is that going to work? So long as it doesn't blast them on feedback. All right, yeah, we can't hear you, so I'll see if I can amplify you through our mic off from the phone. Try that.
Try talking, Brett.
Try talking on your phone, Brett.
I just turned my volume down because I was getting a little bit of feedback here, but can you hear me?
Yeah, we've got you now.
Excellent, thank you. So my, so thank you. So we've established committee, established 11 months ago. The Alderman Warren, Alderman Kennedy are council's representative. It's a special, sorry, it's a working group, not a special committee. Is there a part, as part of the membership, is there the community reps, do any of them identify as Aboriginal?
The, the question Alderman Warren was, do any of the community representatives-
Do you want me to answer that now?
Um, well-
Or can I include it in my-
I, I will take it as a specialist question because we don't have Mr. Tui here, so if you don't mind answering it now.
No, that, that was my first question.
Mr. Tui's actually on, on Zoom. He's actually, I'm actually looking at him. With Alderman Ewerton, Alderman Von Berdo, Alderman Walker, the live stream, Mrs. Coleman.
You're, you're right. He has, I can now see him on Zoom, you're right. Mr. Tui, are you able to speak?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we've got you.
Good. The only person who identifies, identifies as an Aboriginal on our working group is the, one of the members from Reconciliation Tasmania. We are trying to recruit the First, First Nation, some of the First Nation peoples, but we haven't been, had success to date.
Thank you, Alderman Blomley. Do you wish to continue?
Mr. Mayor, I'll try, but it really is obviously no ideal.
Now, we've got you back now.
We've got you, I'm speaker.
Can you hear me there?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. So, Mr. Tui, thank you for that. I gather from that that there is a person who identifies as Aboriginal that's part of the, part of the group. Is that correct?
Correct.
Excellent, thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, tonight, the move of the motion, some, some of her erupting remarks, I thought very well by saying it's been a slow and thoughtful process. And as an orderly, because this is a sensitive issue, and I certainly applaud that approach from the committee. And for that reason, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Mayor. If it's going to be slow and thoughtful and done properly, why are they, why are they now for the motion without bringing back the working group's recommendation to, to a workshop? I mean, no one wants, as I said on Friday, no one wants a repeat of the flag issue. I mean, that does, did our council untile damage? And sadly with all these things, we have to balance the potential political point scoring and reputational damage to council versus sound policy outcomes. As is what was highlighted in the Edge Legal Report, is that sometimes decisions of this council and motivations of individual aldermen or why they arrive at a certain decision is, is in my experience grossly misrepresented. And that does no one any good, not the 12 of us, not our organisation either. And just for clarity as well, one of the speakers talked about the Federal Parliament. As I advised colleagues on Friday, to be very clear, the Australian Senate starts with a prayer, followed by the Lord's Prayer, then, then an acknowledgement to country. So I think we need to be very clear about this sort of stuff because it's very easy to be lazy in the way that we present or misrepresent situations. So, Mr. Mayor, I, I think it's important discussion for us to have. I am concerned it wasn't raised in a workshop. I understand from Alderman Warren why she's done what she's done, and as I said on Friday, everyone has the right to bring a motion on notice, as I've done the surveying, as I've done many other meetings before now. So those few words, I look forward to the rest of the debates, but I think other most of our mind must be two considerations. One, we need a sound policy outcome for this council. Our residents and right payers deserve nothing less. But as equally as important, the Aboriginal people in our city and throughout our state and country also deserve due respect as well. And that's why I am very keen to ensure that these matters are dealt with proficiently, sensitively and appropriately.
Thanks, Alderman Blomley. Other speakers?
Yep.
Alderman Walker, thank you.
Yeah, look, it has been going well. I won't, won't be too verbose. It, it's a small change and I think acknowledgement of the country was brought in around 2015 as a notice of motion. And, you know, it, it was entirely uncontroversial and it just batted on from there. Other councils have changed the order. It seems to be the straightforward process. And this is something that could have been brought forward with or without the recommendations from the working group, but the working group have made those recommendations, so I suggest we take it on board. I am generally happy that Alderman Warren has amended the motion and decoupled the other element. It's part of a workshop discussion. You know, I do believe in separation of church and state, but for full disclosure, I'm a Christian. I'm a Quaker. And we are now proposing to move to Quaker worship with a moment of silence. So more power to us, I guess.
Thank you, Alderman Walker. Any other speakers? Alderman Von Berdo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I echo the sentiments of Alderman Walker. And I'd like to note that I was the alderman who put forward Alderman Warren and Alderman Kennedy to be the chair and the deputy chair of the working group. And I trust them in terms of their reporting back to us in terms of what the working group has put forward. So I will be supporting Alderman Warren's motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Rodri Poi, Alderman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I do thank colleagues for their contributions. In particular, those who addressed a number of the concerns for me to save me having to do it in my wrap-up. It, it is a small change. All we're suggesting is we move the position of the acknowledgement of country. We're not suggesting we change the wording. That requires a lot more thought. And we will approach that thoughtfully when we have the right composition of our committee. In response to Alderman Blomley's question, yes, we are looking at establishing a partnership with the community. We went out to an expression of interest to, to get some community reps who would represent our, the Indigenous people in Clarence, but we have to build that trust in order for that to work. So there are a number of ways that we're approaching that. And we're really reluctant to make too many changes until we have that partnership in place. But just to address some specific points, Alderman James refers to tradition and this is the way it's always been done. And I would make the point that I was talking to a nurse yesterday and she said, we did things 10 years ago that we would not do today. We've learned, we've learned, we've become more aware, we've taken on information and we've changed as a result. And I would hope that council would be able to respond to our increased awareness and knowledge of this area. Alderman James also was concerned that he had not seen the discussion from the rap working group. There was no discussion. I think on the minutes it will say, let's move the acknowledgement because it's what everybody does. And it was, it was not something that was discussed. And I, I struggle and nobody has been able to clarify this for me as to what we would have discussed in a workshop on this point. You move it or you don't move it. What, what is there to workshop about that? So either, it seems to me very simple. I appreciate Alderman Piers' comment that there was a lot of discussion of the Christian pair or otherwise. When the motion clearly states, the amended motion clearly states that we're not going to discuss that tonight, we're going to take that to a workshop where everybody can have their say. Although I do admit concern that there should be a delay in doing this. And I'm reminded that two years ago, I was requested to delay the flag motion until after the rap was completed. Now, it's going to be at least another 18 months or two years before the rap is completed. I am so glad I did not take that advice. If we can pay greater respect to our First Nations people today, why wouldn't we do that? Why would we delay that respect? I was also really concerned by the comments that why should we change our things to cater for 10% of our community? And this was in the discussion about the, the prayer. If you don't believe that we should change things to suit 10% of our community, then you don't believe in gay rights, looking after our disabled people or indeed recognising our First Nations people. That is really concerning. There were also concerns about whether this was the right way to do the acknowledgement. Again, I-
Thank you, Alderman Warren. So the motion is as put forward by Alderman Warren in two parts, as amended and circulated. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Moving on to Alderman's question time, 9.1. There is a question on notice from Alderman Chong. General Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The question, let's read from my screen. The question from Alderman Chong on notice was, with election sign, with elections coming up this year, can the general manager provide an update on the current regulations for signage under the statewide planning scheme? My response to the question is, the scheme provides an exemption for election signage on the basis that the sign must do a number of things. Firstly, not encroach on any road or other public land. It must have a, a maximum area of 1.5 square metres. It must not be erected more than eight weeks prior to the polling date and must be removed within seven days after the polling date. Furthermore, basically, an advertising sign needs a planning permit unless it's exempt. An election sign is exempt in accordance with those rules from the scheme I've just read. But most other signs, other than a temporary sign, will need a permit. The best way to approach this would be to seek a preliminary planning assessment.
Thanks, General Manager. There's a, we'll take the answers to previous council meeting questions as read and move to questions without notice. Alderman Warren. Alderman James?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two questions. Firstly, I think this question may be directed to the former chair of the Sport and Recreation Committee. My question through you to that ex-chairman or chairman in waiting, when is it proposed to reactivate the Sport and Recreation Committee?
I think I'm best qualified to address that, Alderman James. We will be, in fact, the next meeting of the working group that's in place at the moment is immediately after Easter. And at that meeting, we'll be considering a new constitution, which we hope to bring back to council shortly after that. And then that, if provided, council approve it, we'll be in a position to advertise for new members.
Thank you very much.
It's a council workshop, I think.
Yeah.
Goes without saying in some circles.
We like a little bit of humour as well. My question through you to Mr. Graham in his capacity as manager of Engineering Services. Mr. Graham, the open drain that actually abuts some private properties in Lawdendale, which meanders at the, the rear of the properties in, at North Terrace and actually flows under the South Arm Highway into Rouse Bay. Who is responsible for cleaning of the drain? And is there a requirement to have a permit for that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the concrete drain is the responsibility of council to clean that. We don't require a permit in order to undertake cleaning the drain. We may actually advise the owner if we're having to go on a private property to undertake that work.
So is it okay for a supplementary on that matter? Or am I pushing the envelope a bit?
You've already pushed it, Alderman James, yeah, yeah.
I'll, I'll leave it at that.
You might follow it up in slower time.
I will indeed, thank you.
They're overflowing this side.
Alderman Von Berdo, actually, I think you might be next in order on our normal course of events.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one question. What is the total cost of the Edge Legal Review into the Clarence City Council elected member work health and safety?
General Manager?
Through you, Mayor. Thank you for the question. $20,000.
$20,000 exactly.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, did you have another question?
No, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Evans?
Thank you, and I, I have had, I don't want to steal your topic from the question notice, but I do have a question about that issue as well. The, the eight weeks- The eight weeks issue, how do we deal with that with certain rogue people who are putting signs up that might then be covered off with a retrospective eight-week thing? And is there a punishment that they could have if their sign was up nine weeks before when we inevitably go to the polls? The federal poll. We all know what we're all talking about.
Yes, so if you could outline the enforcement procedures of article to council.
I may ask Mr. Lovell to chime in on this one, but certainly in the initial phase, we will write to the property owners and the person who owns the sign, so the candidate and the property owner, advising them if they're in breach and asking them to take action. So our first port of call is always to just seek voluntary compliance. And then if that doesn't change things, then we would look at our options from there, which can be to issue a notice and then simply have the sign removed ourselves. Is there anything you'd like to add to that, Mr. Lovell?
Yeah, so these are signs that went up, might have even been in February. So I guess it's the old, better to seek forgiveness than ask permission sort of thing.
I can confirm if those are the signs I think you're referring to, they are being dealt with.
Yep, great. Because we obviously don't want a free-for-all of everyone speculating what an election date is and just plastering the city when there might not even be an election.
Alderman Blomley?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I have two questions tonight. I hope you can hear me.
Loud and clear.
Great. The first one is, can you please provide an update on the current status of the Shambord development at Kangaroo Bar? Where are things at?
General Manager?
Thank you for the question. Through you, Mayor, the status of the development remains unchanged as far as we're aware at this point. From an officer's point of view, we have a meeting with Shambord representatives on Thursday this week. That was arranged at our initiation last week. And after we've concluded that meeting, I will be in a position to provide Alderman with an update.
I think I'm involved in that meeting too, General Manager.
I'll check, Mayor. I should be.
What's that to do with you?
It is a periodic update, every six months as promised, to the Mayor and General Manager, and I will be there. Okay, second question, Alderman Blomley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My second question is, where is the Rosney Hill development at? Is there an indication as to when works on this development will begin?
Through you, Mayor. Thanks, Alderman Blomley, for the question. As mentioned in a workshop late last month, officers are working through the draft of key terms for a sublease with the proponent. We'll then bring that draft back to a workshop for review with Alderman before progressing that document any further. It's also relevant for me to advise that council is also aware that the proponent has referred themselves to the Department of Agriculture, Water and Environment under the Environmental Protection and Biodiversity Conservation Act 1999, also referred to as the EPBC Act regarding the proposed development. And I can advise that on the 11th of March 2022, council was advised by the proponents. They had received a response to that referral. That response advised that the proposed action is not a controlled action, provided it is taken in a manner described in the decision document. And what that means is that provided the construction is undertaken in the way set out in the referral, it does not require further assessment and approval under the EPBC Act before it can proceed. So that means that the lease is the, the sublease is the next major step for the proponents. And after that has been to council and any further work done, there will need to be a referral through to the state government. So at this stage, we don't have an indication of when works will begin, but that is being driven partly by the sublease and some other actions that will be required.
Thanks, General Manager. Alderman Pearce?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not quite sure how to word this, but with our Have Your Say page, I'm a bit worried that some people seem to think that's the only way Alderman gets some information on a topic. And, you know, we know we can get information on many ways, so I'm just wondering, you know, should something be said on that, this is not the only way that Alderman receives news? Because some people seem to think that's the only way, and I just get a little bit worried on that. I think, I don't know how to word it. No, but I mean, people have, yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's exactly what I'm saying. People seem to think Have Your Say is the only way that people communicate with us.
So what's the question?
The question is, can we put something on there to say this is not the only way, you know, to communicate with Alderman? Because I just think some people think that's the only way we do get communication. Now, second question. Street sweeper, have we only got one or two or whatever? Because a lot of people can play in their streets, and I don't know what their roster is. What is the set time to do it?
Mr. Graham, can you help us there, please?
Through, Mr. Mayor, I think we've got one street sweeper. It's on about an eight to 10 week cycle. Eight to 10 weeks.
Thank you. Alderman Walker?
Yep, thank you. When it comes to sort of parks and playgrounds, there are issues that we discuss from time to time. If we were sort of ranking them, I think you'd put at the apex the Belried Beach Park. It is in part the location, the infrastructure as well as far as the play equipment and just the family destination.
The question?
Yes, the question.
Well, I don't wish for this to be, because I don't wish for this to be perceived as a taking a pudge up in relation to it. But given its status, it's currently in a state where there's big sort of star pickets fencing off areas that are sort of sitting in what's almost like an artificial water feature. My question is in relation to its status, do council, does council believe it's currently in an adequate in an adequate state? And if not, are there extra resources that are you going to be looking to us in the budget to help aid with keeping especially flagship destination playgrounds like this in top condition?
Mr. Graham?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We're certainly looking at a budget consideration to improve the stormwater inundation with the Belried Beach Park received during heavy rainfall.
Okay, did it...
Just as a follow-up to that, if that comes before us in the council budget consideration, is that something that we could really maybe look at tackling in the next financial year?
Well, it's a decision of council if you're wanting to fund those works to be undertaken next financial year. Is that the question, sorry?
Should we decide to fund such works next financial year? Is that something that is capable of being...
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, we can give that a priority if that's what council wants.
Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Yerington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, this one is directed back at Mr. Graham again, I suppose. I mean, just recently, I mean, I've spent a bit of time going up Moreton Road on a regular basis, visiting various businesses up that way and going to the tip. It's getting worse and worse up there with the parking situation. I don't know, I've sort of raised this informally with some staff. I mean, are we actually working on anything at the moment in relation to a parking plan that considers some of the issues that are quite obvious up there in relation to some of the safety issues, some of the functionality issues in terms of getting access to businesses? And I mean, is anything being done at the moment to address that up in through Moreton Road?
Mr. Graham?
Through, Mr. Mayor. I'll take that to the next internal traffic working group and I'll advise Alderman through a briefing.
Thank you.
Well, and just as a follow-up to that, well, my next question would be, yeah, I hope that we do look at it because it's an accident of money that happened in some of the levels and I think it's a real issue that needs to be sorted out. Thank you.
Alderman Kennedy?
Nothing for me, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and Alderman Laura?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Apropos the premises of the public question on notice regarding consultation. Could you confirm for the public record that the results of neither elector polls, let alone consultation, is binding on council?
Well, General Manager, what's the level of position? My immediate assumption is no, it's not binding, but the short answer, Mayor, is that neither are binding. The difference being that an elector poll needs to come before council for consideration.
Did you have another question, Alderman?
No, Mr. Mayor, that was just...
Hard enough?
Unless you would like one, Mr. Mayor, because I can think of one.
Alderman Chong?
Now Alderman Walker asked my question.
Okay, so that brings us to the conclusion of our open session of council. Could you close the fee, please?